I now call to order the meeting of the Board of Education of Baltimore County for June 12, 2018. Earlier this evening, the Board convened a closed session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act for the following reasons. To discuss, one, the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or other officials over whom it has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals; and, seven, consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. The minutes of our closed session may be found on our website at www.bcpss.org/Board/minutes. I now invite you to rise and recite the pledge of allegiance to the flag, to be led by Nathaniel Anderson. We will then remain standing for a moment of silence in recognition of those who have served education in Baltimore County.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you.
The first item on our agenda is consideration of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda, Mrs. White?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes or additions.
It's our motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Miller.
I have a motion. I move to add BCPS Employee Benefits Reserve Funds to the agenda, per my previous several requests. Second.
All right, there's a motion to amend the agenda to add BCPS...
Employee Benefits Reserve Funds.
BCPS Employee Benefits Reserve Fund.
And I just wanted to speak to that.
Is there discussion on that, Mr. Nussbaum?
It was a motion that was seconded.
I'm wondering if there's discussion on that kind of motion, Mrs. Miller. Just be patient. All right, hold on one second.
There was some news recently, a few weeks ago, from the county auditor's office did a report, and it discussed how county employee benefits, the reserve funds for those benefits were being, for lack of a better word, were being rated, in part, to help pay for costs for stat. So there were a lot of questions about that, a lot of teachers were worried about that. And so I have been asking for us to have that as an agenda item, so we could clarify that issue and get information and ask questions in how that might affect our teachers and system.
My recollection is that it matter was addressed in the Friday update either this past week or the week before. Mrs. Causey.
Thank you. Just to speak to Ann's motion, there was a brief comment on it in the weekly update, but then there were additional questions and concerns that Ms. Miller put forward that were brought out by community members. So we would not need to add these emergency agenda items if we would get full answers to questions, or even answers to emails that are submitted. So I would think that we need to do a better job of responding to emails about concerns from community members, and addressing board members' requests for information, and also to be better in responding to adding agenda items that are important to be discussed.
Before I call for the vote, I'll remind the Board that this is a matter that needs unanimity to change the agenda. Mrs. Eaton.
Wasn't that addressed in Abby's newsletter that came out to us last week? She clarified it?
Sure did.
Well, she gave her opinion on it, but her opinion was in conflict with the county auditor's report.
Okay. All right. All in favor of amending the agenda as moved by Mrs. Miller, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
There's four ayes. All opposed? It's opposed, the motion does not carry. Now, the original motion was to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
There are two opposed, three opposed, four opposed. All right, the motion carries. No, the motion does not carry. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Guess we adjourn.
Guess we have to adjourn.
So moved.
So there's only six to have the agenda as presented. Mr. Nussbaum, our parliamentarian, what do we do?
Mrs. Causey. Might I suggest that if we come to an agreement as a board to approve a motion to have this issue discussed at the next meeting, that it will be on the agenda, that then I would move my vote to support this agenda and move it forward.
All right, so there's, I guess that's a motion to amend...
I think it was a proposal.
All right. All right. Very well. I will recommend, I'll place on the agenda the matter of Employee Benefit Reserve Fund, and I ask that the auditor clarify her comments at the next meeting. Now, with that being said, are there seven votes in favor of the agenda as presented? Please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next on our agenda, sign-up cards were available to the public prior to the meeting for anyone wishing to speak at this evening's meeting. Board practice limits to ten, the number of speakers at a regularly scheduled board meeting. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. The completed sign-up cards for this evening have been placed in a box to my right, and the first ten drawn by our student member Josie Schaefer will be our speakers for tonight.
Thanks. Ugh, anyway. Sharon Saroff. Kevin Leary. Terry Anderson. Trina Little, I'm sorry, Little John. Six. The seventh name is Steve McEntire. The eighth name is Nicole Landers. That is all.
All right. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a special order of business, recognition of Ms. Schaefer. And for this purpose, I ask Ms. White to join me up front with Ms. Schaefer.
that the Board accept the resolution as offered.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So Ms. Schaefer, hold that for one second for me. Button my jacket.
I'm sensitive.
All right, the Board has a resolution. Whereas Josie Schaefer has served as a student member of the Board of Education of Baltimore County with honor and distinction for the 2017-2018 school year, including participation on the Board's Curriculum Committee and Policy Review Committee. And whereas her role as a student leader began at Pikesville High School, where she was active in interactive media productions, participated in the Model UN, participated in Read Across America and the Pikesville High School Student Government Association, and assisted with national and local campaigns for elected officials. Her leadership extended countywide through her work on the Board of Education, her membership on the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council, and the Baltimore County Student Council. And whereas, Josie's leadership activities are evident as she played a key role in the organization of students for the March For Our Lives Student Rally in Washington, D.C., voter registration at Pikesville High School, lunched with students throughout the county to gain insight on their thoughts and concerns, and created Josie on the Go!, a televised Education Channel program highlighting student clubs and activities in schools. And whereas, Josie is to be commended with bringing honor to this school district as she continues her education at the University of Maryland College Park. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Baltimore County assembled in regular session on this 12th of June in the year 2018 expresses to Josie its fondest regards and gratitude for her services, and be it further resolved that the Board does herewith extend its best wishes to Josie for happiness, good health, and continued success in future endeavors, and directs a copy of this resolution to be recorded among the permanent records of the Baltimore County Board of Education. Congratulations. That's beautiful. Want to say anything?
Yes.
She's going to save her comments for later. All right. This is one of the opportunities the Board provides to hear the views and receive the advice of community members. The members of the Board appreciate hearing from interested citizens. While we encourage public input on policy programs and practices within the purview of this Board and this system, it is not the proper forum to address specific student or employee matters, or to comment on matters that do not relate to public education in Baltimore County. I ask you to observe the three-minute clock, which will let you know when your time is up. Please conclude your remarks when you see that time is up. And first, we will do advisory and stakeholders, and the first on that list is Tabco's representative, Abby Beaton. Ms. Beaton.
Good evening, Chairman Gillis, Ms. White, and members of the Board. Here we are in the last week of the school year. Several teachers are here tonight instead of finishing their work because they believe there are problems in early childhood education. They didn't feel they could wait any longer. Please understand that many more early childhood educators have participated by taking our surveys and identifying the many difficulties we see for our youngest learners in the present models used in our schools here and across the nation. They just couldn't attend tonight because of the demands on their time. We can't keep ignoring the whole child and pushing down curriculum meant for older children. Our students are acting out because the work is developmentally inappropriate for early learners. Reading by the end of kindergarten is not the be-all, end-all. We don't allow our students the time to explore and learn appropriately for maximum benefits. The love of learning and the ability to learn new things are the real goals of teaching. The young learners need time to explore and learn how to get along with one another and cope with challenging situations. They need to learn how to deal with adverse situations when the outcomes may not be what they want, but they can learn the coping skills necessary to move forward successfully in life. Conscious discipline is a first step, but without the timing, training, and expertise to implement the program, it becomes just another good idea gone wrong. The curriculum, the class sizes, little or no support staff, the lack of appropriate recess time, even the deletion of housekeeping corner, big blocks, and rest time have brought about behavioral issues. These are the unintended consequences of inappropriate early childhood expectations. Even for those students who are already reading and even writing, the need for socialization is necessary. We must make sure we give our early childhood educators the tools and time necessary for real learning that will help them move their students forward without jeopardizing their social, emotional health. We need to allow time for students to learn and grow so they will become successful learners and citizens. There is a famous book called The Hurried Child by David Elkind. He explains about our children growing up too fast, too soon, and how harmful it is. It is not only harmful to the children, but in the long run, it ends up harming all of us. We need to get off the fast track and make common sense decisions for our early childhood students. Thank you.
Ms. Beaton. Our next speaker is from the PTA Council of Baltimore County, Cynthia Boyd.
Good evening. I'm Cynthia Boyd, and I'm speaking on behalf of Jane Lee, PTA Council President, and Andrew Broadwater, Chair of PTA's Council's Health and Safety Committee. We believe that good student health has three legs: sleep and a balance of activities, including plenty of play, hands-on activities, exercise, and good nutrition. We are pleased to see the Board of Education's commitment to the health and wellness of our students. The recent creation of the School Day Task Force, including efforts to examine school start times, is a major step forward. The CDC, along with the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association, the National Association of School Nurses, and Society of Pediatric Nurses and others, support healthy school start times as a component of wellness for our students. These organizations recommend school start times for adolescents after 8:30 a.m. The Maryland Department of Health and Mental Hygiene recommends schools start after 8 a.m. Families are concerned about the effects of start times on our kids, and the National PTA, as well as Baltimore County's PTA Council, support efforts to move toward healthy school start times for high schools and middle school students to support their physical and mental health, safety, and academic performance. BCPS students in regular high schools were on the bus shortly after 6 a.m. Magnet pickups are even earlier. Early school start times, like those in BCPS, lead to chronic sleep deprivation for adolescents whose physiology makes it hard for them to go to sleep and wake up early. The accumulated sleep deprivation impairs their attention, memory, and judgment. It puts our students at higher risk of depression, substance abuse, car crashes, among other dangers. Districts with later start times experience lower truancy and disciplinary incidents, and higher levels of achievement and performance. We hope also that the task force considers the issue of recess as part of the elementary day. While we support the current policy of discouraging recess removal as a disciplinary tool, we hope you consider the positive impact that more recess with plenty of play could have at other times throughout the day could have on elementary school students. Research backs what parents know. When kids get the chance to move and play during the day, it's no surprise that they're able to focus better with improved behavior and higher levels of learning. Finally, we urge you to remember the third leg of good health: nutrition. Hungry kids have trouble learning, and the district already provides healthy meals every day to thousands of students. But we could do more. We have high-poverty schools eligible for the community eligibility provision, which would provide free breakfast and lunch to students at these schools without paperwork required of each student, something that generally produces higher participation, meaning more hungry students get food. The mission of BCPS is to enable all students to reach their maximum potential as responsible, lifelong learners, and productive citizens. We ask you to remember that student health through sleep, a balance of activities, including plenty of play, hands-on activities, and exercise, and nutrition, is an important component of that goal.
Nice timing. Our next speaker is from the Citizens Advisory Committee for Gifted and Talented Education, Julie Miller-Bretz.
Good evening, Chairman Gillis, Board members, Ms. White, and the BCPS community. I recently shared a quick read and a congratulatory message with some of you at my son's recent graduation from Tassin High School. He has had a very strong academic career. He was one of the top in his class, making straight A's throughout high school. He took 16 AP classes, earning one four with fives on the remainder. He took an online course, he took a class at CCBC, and he has taken a couple of classes at Hopkins. He won a scholarship last summer to learn the Tajiki language, and won another scholarship to study in India over the next 10 months in order to learn Hindi. He will continue on to college upon his return to the U.S. My son is a real success story, for which I am really proud and grateful, but it hasn't been easy for him. When we moved here at the start of his sixth grade year, the middle school failed to recognize how quickly and easily my son was able to master concepts, and despite repeated conversations and conferences about differentiation, course compacting, and acceleration, it took until eighth grade for the school to find a way to accelerate him, and that was only in one subject area. My son, while doing a lot of work, has never had to work hard at any of his BCPS classes. He actually wishes that he would have received more guidance at middle and high school so that he could have taken more AP classes at an earlier time, freeing him from some electives he was interested in. He found out about the NSLIY language scholarships on his own and pursued them. He found out about a computational linguistics competition from a classmate and talked a teacher into sponsoring the test at his high school, which both he and a classmate then scored in the top 10 percent of the country on. He has had to dig and delve and consistently search for things that keep him interested and engaged in learning because his school was not doing that for him. My son is not unique, though. Don't think for a second that there aren't other children like him throughout all of BCPS. There are students who are capable of unimaginable accomplishments but who are not getting supported by their schools. I know because we hear from them. The parent whose third grader has decided on his own to learn Latin over the summer so he won't get bored, but whose school was incredulous when the mother asked about grade level acceleration. The parent who has denied her grade level acceleration request for her son despite testing that indicated he was scoring in the 90th percentile or above in reading and math, for a grade level two years above where he is currently academically placed. The parents who have students who are reading and writing at incredibly high levels for their age, but in a district that does not pursue subject-level acceleration in ELA, and which has no enrichment that approaches their needs. The parents who daily see their child not receive direct teacher time and instead be directed to educational software for a product that is gamified, not appropriately challenging, and with no apparent evaluation about whether what is being delivered through the device is the right thing for the student. The parents who are leaving the BCPS school system because they believe that despite the personalized learning that the district promises, they see teachers who really don't know their children at all. And one of the children of color, the low SES students, the students speaking other languages, the 2E students who aren't even being identified. These issues of identification and programming are at the crux of the GT experience, and what we will be focusing our advocacy on in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's time for public comment, and our first speaker is Susan Schaefer. Hello.
I am Susan Schaefer, and I'm finishing up my 31st year here in Baltimore County, and I love every minute of it. I don't see retirement in sight, but my greatest achievements are my two girls. Jalen just turned 16 and finished her sophomore year at Pikesville High, and our amazing Josie. Tonight, her father, Paul, and I are joined by Josie's very own Shelley Hettelman, Betsy Goldstein, Josie's kindergarten teacher, Collette Cohen, her first-grade teacher, Judy Goldberg, her second-grade teacher, and Jill Schindler, Josie's second mom. Everyone needs a second home where you can let your guard down and just be yourself. When Josie told me she was going to apply to be the student member of the Board, I thought, I didn't say it, why? Then I reflected back. Josie not being able to sit up on her own, but she would find a way to pull herself up in her stroller, holding one with one hand and waving with the other one to anyone that would look at her, smiling a beautiful smile as we strolled, making friends everywhere we went, strangers and new friends stopping us to chat with us. Josie, starting preschool at two, part-time, her classmates learned the days of the week because they loved Tuesdays and Thursdays best. Those were the days that Josie would be there to lead them in their fun adventures during free play. Josie in kindergarten, every time her teacher would call on her, Josie would pop up with her patent leathers, go to the front of the class to share her response. I often said, "Please tell her to sit down," but her teacher liked it. Josie in elementary school, being the student the teachers could count on to graciously be anyone's partner, she was always so eager to find out what new learning would happen each day. Josie always had that hand up, waving to share and explore new ideas. Josie took her job on the safety patrol very seriously, and loved wearing that poncho on rainy days. Josie in middle school, walking the halls, handing out lemons, sharing them with people, saying, "Here, make some lemonade." She took her first leadership role when she became part of the National Junior Honor Society, learning to work with others she didn't always agree with. Josie in high school, part of SGA for three years, organizing pep rallies and basketball games between the school staff and Bobby Zirkin's office, interning with Shelley Hettelman, and working on Hillary Clinton's and Vicky Almond's campaigns. After reflecting, of course, we would see our Josie Emily on the Board of Education. Her passion to listen to others, combined with her drive to help create positive changes for our community. She was a perfect match in our eyes. When Josie was very young, I had to talk to her about being sassy. She asked why I was mean. I said, "I want you to learn to be kind and welcoming to everyone. I want people to think, wow, I like that Josie Schaefer, and I'd like to spend more time with her." Josie, I believe you had met that wish of ours. Watching you lead over the past year, reading numerous articles about your actions and ideas, the enormous amount of feedback about your character is more than we could ever imagine for you at 18 years old. Ladies and gentlemen on this Board, thank you for helping us to shape the marvelous person we are now sending on her next adventure. We love you, and we are bursting with pride.
Okay, Sharon Saroff, you have a tough assignment to follow that. Good evening.
When we speak of school safety, we often think of fire drills, unusual weather, active shooters, and bullying. How many of us think of IEPs and students with special needs? When IEPs are not followed with fidelity, we endanger everyone in the schoolhouse. Research notes that students with special needs are more likely to be abused and bullied. Personally, as a mom of special needs child and an advocate, I know that if a child's IEP is not appropriately addressed, they can cause danger to themselves and others. I often hear people comment on how expensive special education is. We have gone over non-public placements and how expensive they are in this boardroom. We can lessen those expenses if we are appropriately following IEPs, and if we have appropriate IEPs for our students with special needs. You've all met my son. You've all heard him speak. How many of you can picture him flipping a desk at the age of six, or destroying a room? Yes, he did that. But because I fought to have his IEP followed with fidelity, and fought to have a proper IEP, he turned out the way he did. But he felt abuse, he felt bullying, and sometimes he was the creator of that danger in the classroom. And he doesn't have a problem with me saying that. There are a lot of people in this room tonight who are concerned about bullying in the classroom and in our schools. They're concerned about violence in the classrooms in our schools. We need to follow IEPs with fidelity. We need to have appropriate IEPs, and we need to stop being afraid of being a little less perfect so that we can give our students what they need so that they can thrive in our classrooms as opposed to what's really going on in there. Where students are not thriving, students are not learning. And I can give you example after example. It needs to change.
Our next speaker is Kevin Leary. Kevin Leary.
Good evening, everyone. Hello again. I'm Kevin Leary, from the Perry Hall School District, and I wanted to speak to you tonight again about forming a task force for school violence and bullying. I want to read you a note that I got from a teacher in one of our schools. She did not want to come here and speak tonight because she was afraid of retribution. So it was in response to a post on social media. "This needs to stop. I see this every day in my school. As a teacher, I can do nothing, I can't do anything. Our hands are tied. It's absolutely absurd. Writing them up and sending them to the office does nothing. They are sent right back laughing at the teachers and giving looks of attitude of ha. I'm going to keep doing what I want because you can't do anything to me, all because the school gets in trouble if our suspension rate is too high. Give me an effing break." It's not my words. So the suspension rate of a school is more important than a safe environment where students can learn. It's absolutely ridiculous that those who are victims are treated like crap because of the system, and that protects bullies. Do something about this, please. Have your children ever been bullied? Mine have. It sucks. The emotional torment does not stop when the school day is over. It carries over every day, in and out of school. They are terrified to come back to school because they don't know what is going to happen the next day. Absolutely unacceptable. The bullies are the victors in these situations. Bullies need to be removed and kept out of classrooms, repeat offenders or not. No tolerance at all. A message needs to be sent to the parents as well. Inconvenience to parents because of their child's asinine behavior, please do something to get this to stop. This has to stop. Now, this comes from a teacher in one of our schools. I get these messages daily, from teachers, from students, from school bus drivers. When are we going to, as community leaders, do something about this problem? I just, I don't know what else to say. I've been here, you guys know I've been here like every other week for the last three or four months, asking for some kind of resolution of this problem, and we need to do something as a group. We can work together and fix this. I promise you, I will work for this for free. I'm an investigator by trade. I will help you investigate the problems that are happening in these schools. I will do it for free. I generally get about $100 bucks an hour, but I'll do it for free for the school board and for our children. Thank you for letting me share, and please consider having the parents and community members on the task force, if you consider the task force. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amanda Holtzner Eisenhardt.
Good evening, members of the board. I represent 134 or more parents of DropaView Elementary School students. We request that you reconsider the time change that was proposed for the upcoming year. As you may know, and I'm going to read off to you, DropaView Elementary is facing later school start times next year, which could cost our students a total of 10 instructional days each year for dismissal time. Currently, DropaView opens at 9:00 and dismissal begins at 3:35. Next year, the county's plan is to change that to 9:15 arrival and dismissal at 4:05. However, there are many concerned parents who disagree for the following reasons. Instructional time, equalling 10 total days, will be lost just to provide safe dismissal for students and still meet teacher union requirements of not keeping teachers past 4:15. The school currently dismisses at 3:35 and is scheduled to dismiss at 4:05, as stated. Currently, dismissal takes 30 minutes on average, so in order to dismiss and meet the teacher union requirements, next year, the school will need to begin dismissal at 3:45. So from 3:45 to 4:05 is where we get our 20 minutes. If you multiply that by 180 days, that will give you your 10 days of instructional time, which doesn't seem to meet the requirements. The parents are concerned about that. We also are concerned about the traffic in our community. DropaView sits on Honey Go Boulevard where there's already a delay, and later times, meaning traffic overcrowding into rush hour on Honey Go Boulevard, where we already don't have much parking, and our school dismissal line backs up onto Honey Go Boulevard, backs up 43, and then even sometimes onto 95. After-school activities, participation will be affected for our students, and both students' parents' and children's routines that have been established in the community will all be disrupted for the new school that will be coming in place, which will have a different and earlier time. So our parents request that you consider not changing our time and relooking at the time due to the 10 instructional days that we will lose. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Teri Anderson.
Hello, everybody. Thank you. I'm a little nervous, so bear with me. The reason I came here is to follow up, to just ask you to please consider the task force, to assure us parents that students and faculty are safe. I've sent letters up to the board. I've talked with Dr. Roberts, with our director of safety, Michael Ford, and Dr. Jones. We've gotten some incidents that's happened at our school. This isn't just about my child. I'm a scout leader. I'm in the community, and so many parents have come to me with concerns of things that are happening in our community and outside of our community. So I'm asking for you just to consider putting together a task force, including parents and maybe students. My son has been bullied. Just sadly, many things happened to him. He is such a strong man that he went to Annapolis and testified to try and get laws changed. He started a be kind thing at school where he got over 350 Post-its to put a positive thing on everybody's locker to try and change the school climate. The school climates are horrible, and unfortunately, other people may argue with that. But I know that right now, he's unable to attend school. It got so bad. So as a community leader, I said, "How do we fix this? How do we take care of this in our community? What's going on in the climate? You know, I've talked to the principal. What can we do to change?" I don't know the answer, so that's why I think we need to have a task force to just look at it. I just got texts from things that's happening at the school today. Parents come to me because they've seen, excuse me, the hell my son's been through. My son's been a very strong advocate for himself until he could no longer take it, and he's out on HHT now because of it. So I come to you as a parent, a stakeholder, a community leader, to just ask you to please consider looking at the school climate, working together with families, working as a group to see what we can do to change this. I know you all care. I know that it's happening, and I don't know if it's being reported properly or not. It's not just my son. It's many kids out there that are afraid to come to school. So thank you.
Our next speaker is Trina Littlejohn.
Good evening. Let me preface my comments with a disclaimer. I'm often told that I can be very direct and that some people don't know quite how to take me or my comments. My comments tonight are not meant to be rude, rather, I'm just giving an opinion in a very concise manner. I don't believe that as adults we should have to dance around a topic. Like I said during a recent interview, we should be able to put our big boy or girl panties on and come to the table prepared. Mrs. Hen, you spend a good deal of time at each board meeting posting to Facebook about various motions and/or causes you support. I'm hoping that maybe you might take some time to share my comments tonight. Just quickly, by show of hands, not from the board members, but how many of the stakeholders behind me have seen State Superintendent Karen Salmon at any BCPS function or BCPS Board of Education function? I'm pretty active in BCPS, and I don't know that before her decision to deny Ms. White's appointment as superintendent, I would have been able to pick her out of a crowd. I say that because I question how she could possibly know what is best for BCPS if she has no interactions with us. What in her own mind qualifies her to make such an important and lasting decision? It doesn't really matter if I support Ms. White or not. You see, any effective decision-maker knows that one of the steps in the decision-making process, and it is about the process, right, Ms. Cossey, Ms. Hen, and Ms. Miller? It's about a process, is to gather information. This step involves both internal and external work. Some information is internal. You'll seek it through a process of self-assessment, which I'm sure she did. Other information is external. You find it from other people and from other sources. It is unconscionable to me that Ms. Salmon would not have scheduled her own town halls with the stakeholders of Baltimore County to get our input. I find it cowardice that she, after our pushback, did not personally address this board and our stakeholders with her decision. It is very easy to hide behind the cloak of pen and paper. Over the last several meetings, I've heard a lot of talk about the new board and school safety. I have to watch, I've watched candidates come up here and peacock as they speak up for their causes. I've been here till 11:30 when they've long gone. It starts here when we talk about safety. I encourage each of you to look at your social media sites, and I encourage you to challenge your stakeholders who use those very sites to bully. So before we presume... Thank you.
Our next speaker is Steve McIntyre.
Hello. Good evening. I'm the parent of two elementary school students here in Baltimore County, and I'd like to distribute an article from yesterday's Washington Post to the board. It describes an absolutely horrific scene, a middle school where a violent gang openly operates, recruits, an eighth grader raped in the hallway, fearful to report the crime because the perpetrator remains in her school. Daily fights, death threats streamed on social media, teachers fearful for their lives but also fearful for retribution by the administration for talking about these issues. Anti-social behavior that spreads like a virus through an adolescent community because the adults in charge ignore it. And in response, Prince George's County spokesman White says, "The school follows disciplinary guidelines, and teachers aren't required to be notified why students are suspended." If you read this article, you'll probably find that response to be a bit inadequate. And this isn't sensationalist. This is the Washington Post. This isn't far away. It's Prince George's County, operating under the same state rules that we operate under. What's described here is a total breakdown in the school environment, and it's horrific. But it's also the result of deliberate policy choices. It may be easy to blame the administrators at the school, but we all know they're prevented from removing violent disruptive students from school. We all know they're subject to quotas, bureaucratic barriers to out-of-school suspensions. And the U.S. Department of Education may have encouraged these foolish policies with their Dear Colleague letter, but they've been unquestionably adopted by school boards and implemented by school systems across the country, including here at BCPS. So the horrors we see here will be more individualized, less sensationalist, but without a doubt, there are thousands of kids who go to school every day in fear, fear of violence, fear that the adults in charge won't do anything. And that really needs to end. I hope this disciplinary committee is passed and is the beginning of taking back policy from the unaccountable bureaucrats and ideologues who have promulgated these flawed theories. In the meantime, I just ask you to please stop putting your head in the sand about this brewing crisis. There's no amount of money or technology that can fix a problem like this. The only thing we can do is to fix the policies they've created. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Nicole Landers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here to visit again. I have a large group of my members behind me and even more watching from home. The first time I came in here was January, when I asked and pleaded for some kind of attention to the growing violence crisis in our schools. I do believe my words then were that parents were done and that we were going to be on the move. Since that time, I've drawn attention to BCPS, not only in the local media but in the national media, most recently in an article by the Daily Signal that has over a million views at this point. I'm not going away, and neither are any of the others in this room dressed in red or the many that are watching from home, and I thank very much for their support at this time. We have a school violence crisis in our schools. Later tonight, you're going to discuss performance. How much do you think school performance is impacted by disruptive acts of violence, assaults, sexual assaults, disrespect in our schools? How much do you think that's impacting the learning environment for all the students, including the disruptive ones? Because of my research, I'm very well aware of how tied the hands of this board are due to MSDE requirements that come down from the federal government. But there are things that you can do as a board to support the community and help the families know that you are willing to take action and look at better ways to support families and protect kids and teachers. Certainly, as a board, an excellent step is to put a task force in place that includes family members, students, teachers if they're willing, although I get called by them daily, and they're terrified to talk out. Just last night, we had two teachers from the county masked on Project Baltimore. The school system's response is that they're outliers, which I find appalling. Mrs. White, I know that you've come up through the ranks, and I know that you're very aware of what's actually happening in the schools. And as an act of goodwill, I would hope that you would reach out and support the teachers and the children who are all crying for help. I thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
Next on our agenda is public comment on Board of Education policies 1270, 4002, 4008, and 4010. The first is Policy 1270, Community Relations, Community Involvement, Parent and Family Engagement. Sharon Saroff.
I'm not a native Marylander. I'm from New York. But in my 16 years of being in this state, I'm often heard to remark that I find the communication to be very lacking. And this is true, unfortunately, of the way we do communication in BCPS. If we want to improve public And I can tell you that there are plenty of people in the community that don't know half the time when a public comment is happening. Tonight is a perfect example. I didn't know that there was going to be any public comment tonight until I walked into the room for these policies. And I know that I was the only one that signed up, at least when I walked into this room. We have to find a better way to communicate to parents and your stakeholders that you want to hear from them, that you're available to them. Putting a sign-up sheet in your building half an hour before you're having that public comment is not the way to alert people.
Ms. Saroff is correct that she was the only person to sign up for these four policies. So the next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report, and I ask Ms. White to now speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to, again, congratulate Josie Schaefer. Josie, you have actually been an absolute pleasure to work with. So if you would just join me in thanking Josie Schaefer once again for her work. And best wishes to you and all that you do. So as we approach the last day of school, I want to send out a heartfelt thank you to our educators, to our staff, and to our leaders, and our families and community members for another wonderful year of teaching and learning. Our educators and our staff members never wavered this year on focusing on excellent instruction in each and every classroom every day. So as quickly as this school year has flown by, we have accomplished quite a bit together, and I'd like to highlight some of those accomplishments that require not only leadership, but also vigilance, dedication, and commitment. So for instance, schools across the system this year have focused on literacy across the disciplines to help students develop the skills and knowledge to become independent, strategic, lifelong readers and writers, and critical thinkers. This vision in terms of literacy that I know that we focused on beginning July 1st last year is supported through ongoing role-tailored professional learning and instructional observations as well. We created the first Office of School Climate this year to support healthy, welcoming, safe learning environments in every school that enables students and staff to thrive. Counselors, pupil personnel workers, psychologists, social workers, and the superintendents designees work with schools to address issues that affect learning. And I know that many of you spoke to that tonight, and that is why this board, and thank you to this board also for supporting, and to our county partners as well, for supporting efforts in terms of more resources to address student learning, student behavior, and student discipline as well through those human resources that are so critically important when we're talking about the relationships that we need to build with our students. So our teachers also across the system had the opportunity to become familiar with our new learning management system known as Schoology, which is replacing N-Grade as our online repository for instructional materials and resources. Families will be able to find current student courses, grades, and assignments on Schoology through BCPS One beginning August 13th. Schoology offers easier communication between schools and homes. This is what our parents and teachers and community members asked for when we held community meetings in the fall, and we had advisory council meetings in the fall, and we delivered on that promise to provide easier communication and to find a system that would be more intuitive and one that would meet the needs of the community as well. And so we are proud of the fact that we were able to meet that need. We also launched the Early College Program at Woodlawn High School this year, the first BCPS program offering a diploma and an associate's degree in partnership with the Community College of Baltimore County. We offered AVID at more middle schools and even at an elementary school. AVID is a college preparatory program that stands for advancement via individual determination. We also increased supports for college and career readiness by offering more middle school STEM courses and more opportunities to earn college credits during high school. To increase transparency, which, again, was another ask during the fall, particularly during our community meetings, we presented our first public online dashboards for interactive access for stakeholder survey data, as well as Blueprint 2.0 metrics focused on academics, safety, and organizational effectiveness. Dr. Russell Brown will present the newest dashboards to the board this evening, and a dashboard for students' counts and enrollment information will be coming this fall. In partnership with the Baltimore County Public Library, we are offering all students open access to public library resources through their BCPS student ID and an expansion of the Students Achieve in Libraries program. We kicked off a new task force to align the needs of businesses in the Northwest area with career and technology education, as well as the new task force examining the school day length, secondary student schedules, and start and end times. And I know that there is talk about a task force about discipline, but I just want you to also know, and for the public to understand, there are two work groups currently on those topics. The first work group that is already in process is the one that we are so happy to work with Tabco on in terms of student discipline policies, practices, and procedures, where our teachers are uniquely involved so that they can have their voices heard as well in terms of discipline policies. We also have a committee on the Student Behavior Handbook that is made up of various stakeholders to examine various student behavior practices and discipline policies, data, and related consequences as well. So there are two committees, or two work groups, I should say, that are already in place for that, and we will continue to examine that data. And I must say, contrary to what we've heard tonight, we support our principals when it comes to making sure that we're holding students accountable for their behavior, and if they need to be separated from the school program, they will absolutely do so. Bullying is not acceptable anytime, anywhere, and anyplace. And so we will not tolerate bullying in our schools, and there is no effort to suppress any type of data. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. In addition, this school year brought a number of system-wide honors in recognition of the Passport Elementary World Language Program, Music Education, Digital Citizenship, Financial Management, Financial Reporting, Procurement, and Communication. This is in addition to a host of awards earned by our staff, students, and schools. We are also excited to expand student access to magnet programs this year to ensure program continuity across the grade spans. And thanks to a five-year, $15 million grant, we are going to realize that expansion. New programs will be focused on international studies, which will be available at Woodmore Elementary School, Middle River, and Windsor Mill Middle Schools, and Newtown High School. This fall will also mark the beginning of our first PTEC program at Dundalk High School. Through PTEC, which stands for Pathways in Technology Early College High School, students will earn a high school diploma and an associate's degree from CCBC. In addition, in partnership with our four industry partners, students will benefit from skills training, mentoring, summer internships, and preparation for entry-level jobs at Albin Cat, KCI, Stanley Black &amp; Decker, or Whiting Turner. Our count of schools and programs and centers will also increase to 174, as Honey Go Elementary School welcomes its first students in Perry Hall under the leadership of Principal Charlene Banky. And we just got news just before this meeting started that we have gotten another reading grant. Ms. Shea, how much money have we received for our struggling readers and our striving readers, particularly at the secondary level as well? These are amazing accomplishments that I would like to thank our staff for over the course of this year. So you've seen me tweet out, and you've heard, and you've read in various newsletters. I've asked the staff, and I've asked our teachers and community members, let's stay focused on what matters most, and that's our children. And yes, that does require leadership, and it requires tenacity and perseverance, and I'm so incredibly proud of our staff. Many of in our BCPS family are involved with curriculum writing this summer, extended year learning, professional learning, and summer camps, and I hope that all will get a chance to enjoy some rest and relaxation over the summer, along with all of these summer opportunities. I want to once again congratulate the BCPS class of 2018 and wish every one of our new alumni the absolute best of wishes as they move on to college careers, military service, and other pursuits. And thank you to the board. I know that most of you, just about all of you, I think that we had one member who was unable to join us, but most joined our graduations, and so I'm so appreciative of your participation as well for joining our commencement celebrations. And thank you to our families for entrusting us with your children during these precious years. So let's take a look back at our graduations.
From this moment on, we are members of the real world.
Has everybody checked in yet? If you haven't, please come up front to check in.
These years have easily been the greatest years of our life, full of love, full of friendships.
The relationships that we foster with those around us are vital to our own growth and progression.
I've been a part of various clubs and activities, and I feel that it has prepared me to be a part of the University of Maryland College Park.
BCPS has continuously offered me challenging courses and extracurricular activities, and I've made so many connections in my field, and I feel ready to advance in the world of work.
Teachers became like second parents, who were willing to care for us as their own and ask for nothing in return.
And so I am inspired by each and every one of you, and I'm proud of you. And you need to know that you are perfect just the way that you are. You are enough. You are good enough. You are smart enough. You are intelligent enough. You have everything it takes. You have the grit and determination. Your presence here today says that.
Being on the Baltimore County Board of Education has really allowed me to expand how I think about other opinions and work well with others, and also learn about policymaking and making contracts, making sure everyone's represented well. And I'm so glad that I had the opportunity to do that.
And by the power vested in us, we hereby declare the class of 2018 to be graduates of the Baltimore County Public High School.
We must all choose to be different and follow in our own footsteps, not that of our parents or family members before us. What I'm saying is, it doesn't matter where you come from. What matters is where you're going and how you plan to get there.
Mr. Chair, that's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Next on our agenda is the chair's remarks, and this has indeed been a busy time. In case the teachers of the Baltimore County Public Schools didn't know, there are three days left in the school year. It's also coming quickly, the end of the term for all of the board members around the dais. We have about five months left on our terms before there are both elections and appointments to fill all 11 of these seats. Of course, our friend Josie, her seat is going to be filled by a new board member at our next meeting. I, too, would like to recognize all of those Baltimore County Public School, high school graduates. The last several weeks have indeed been filled with plenty of time at Towson University and at UMBC and places around the county. So congratulations to all of the graduates, and we'll personify that with Josie. Congratulations. Just yesterday was a volunteer recognition ceremony, and of course, it was emceed by none other than Josie. And Mr. Vurch and I were pleased to attend and to assist in recognizing those who have spent so much time volunteering their time to make Baltimore County Public Schools a better place. Individuals who share their time actually could no better way show their commitment to our community, to our public schools. So on behalf of the board, I thank all of those persons who have volunteered their time during this school year. And as we said yesterday, we hope they get plenty of rest over the summer and that next year they come back and bring their friends. We also recently had a ribbon cutting for the renovated Dumbarton Middle School, and it looks fantastic. It's air-conditioned, and it's already in use and ready for the next school year, for a full school year of the newly renovated Dumbarton Middle School. And although we've just recognized Josie Schaefer with a resolution, and we've heard from Mom, and we've heard from Mrs. White, I'd like to add my personal thank you to Josie. If all of us had the smarts and the passion and the personality that Josie has, this would indeed be a marvelous world. So, next on our agenda, none other than Josie Schaefer.
Thank you. Before I begin, on those little placards, that's a photo of me when I got the call that I was going to be smobbed, so it's like a weird full circle kind of thing. But good evening and happy Tuesday. If you haven't heard, this is my last meeting of the Board of Education, and what a crazy year it's been. My first event as student member of the board was hosting a teacher panel for the Administrative and Supervisory Meeting in August. After the event, I was in the hall, sticking out like a sore thumb, being a 17-year-old in a sea of distinguished BCPS administrators. I ran into one of my assistant principals, who was not coming back to Pikesville this school year. She looked me up and down and went, "Oh, so you're that thing now." Yes, I was that thing now. It has been an honor to be that thing, student member of the Board of Education, representing 113,000 students. But when I was elected last March, I had no idea what I was getting into. This has been the most wild and stressful year of my life, though if I could do it again, I wouldn't want to change a thing. Sorry. My favorite part about being smob was meeting students. I traveled through elementary, middle, and high school with the same group of students that I've known for 13 years. But being smob literally made me travel around the Beltway to meet students from different backgrounds and understand the culture and climate of their schools. Being smob meant that I was in contact with student leaders from around the county and state. I was fortunate to be on the Superintendent Advisory Council this year and an Executive Board Member of the Maryland Association of Student Councils. Serving on the Baltimore County Student Council's Exec Board also gave me direct access to some of the brightest students in the county. I'm grateful for them for allowing me to have 40 minutes of unfiltered question-and-answer sessions about whatever the board was up to the week before. And thank you to Jake Turner for being a great BCSE president and friend, who despite having GAs canceled because of weather, never gave up on increasing student leadership around the county. around the county. My BCPS TV show, On the Move with Josie, is something that I'm so proud of. I'm grateful to the four clubs for allowing me to highlight their stories, and I've spoken about it enough times, so I hope you've seen at least one episode. But I can't thank BCPS TV and Mr. Dalen enough for allowing me to do this. It's been a crazy year. Have I mentioned that yet? But this experience has taught me so much. I learned what to do and what not to do during debates, how to survive a school day after a late-night, five-hour board meeting with no late pass, and what it means to be a leader. My mom kept saying that my head was going to be too big to fit in our tiny car, but it was always fun to hear that my friends and teachers saw me in the corner of their TV screen when they watched WBAL in the morning after a board meeting. And one time, I got recognized, like I was out in public, and someone was like, "School Board?" And I was like, "Oh, my God." But that was really cool. Thank you to my fellow board members for being kind and supportive and hopefully seeing me as a peer. Thank you to my teachers throughout my 13 years in Baltimore County schools for helping me find what I'm passionate in and shaping me into the person that I am. My kindergarten, first, and second grade teachers were actually here tonight, including my mom, who's been, she was my first-grade teacher, and she's been teaching in BCPS for 31 years. And she also does summer school, too. So she, all around the clock. Thank you to Ms. Murray, who's been the BCSE advisor and was also by my side this year to navigate, to help me navigate the board. To my friends, thank you for always encouraging me and pretending not to get tired of me talking about the board. And thank you to my parents for being so supportive and allowing me to take the car whenever I needed to get to an event or a board meeting. And finally, thank you to the students who elected me to serve as smob. Thank you for believing in me and allowing me to spend the year making sure the student voice is listened to. Being smob does not mean that I hear from the 200 Pikesville seniors before voting on policies and contracts, but it means to listen to students from different schools, who participate in different clubs, and who may not have the same opinions as me. To the adults in the room, do not count the student voice out. This year, students have proven that we are capable of a great change, and I hope that BCPS students know that when they speak up, there is someone there to listen. It has been an honor to be your student member of the board for the 2017-2018 school year. Roll terms.
Next on our agenda is item J, and it concerns the suggested change of the Board of Education meeting schedule for 2018-2019. Beginning December 3, 2018, the Board of Education will become a hybrid board, partially elected, partially appointed. And the suggestion represented in the revised schedule recognizes that the scheduled December 4, 2018 meeting, a day after this board's term is up, would require board members, new board members, to be sworn in on December 3 or December 4 to allow the meeting to proceed, because materials could not be distributed to board members before they are sworn. So the suggestion is that the revised schedule would eliminate the December 4, 2018 meeting. Is there a motion to accept that? Hearing, none? We won't? Okay, there's a motion. How about a second? Okay, now, discussion on revising the schedule. Mrs. Miller then Mrs. Causey.
Thank you. When the new board starts on December 4, we know that they're going to have a very short window to launch into a superintendent search and also to prepare for the budget process, which they'll be voting on in early February. I know, and Julie knows, what that's like, to start in December and then have to get a handle on the budget that quickly. So what this would in fact do is take away two more weeks, critical weeks, out of that small window that they have. And we've had a lot of discussions about how they would have to come in immediately and launch into a search for the new superintendent. Typically, it's suggested, Mabe suggested it to us, that we really want six months or more for that search. And so if they're not even able to come in until the second meeting in December, they won't even have an agenda necessarily set that would allow them to discuss those topics. It might not be until even January before they can even begin discussion on those topics. So I've got a couple of questions. One is, what materials, because, I mean, we post most of the materials online for the public to see the Wednesday before, so those board members would have access to that information. So the only materials that would not be able to be distributed, I'm assuming would be personnel matters or any proprietary information. So if they, someone could explain what materials would not be able by law to be distributed?
It is matters that require you to be sworn before you receive. So they would be matters, just as you said, confidential matters, personnel matters, financial matters, and the like.
Well, we don't normally have all of that. So the only thing that I can think of that we typically have that could not be distributed would be personnel matters.
Yeah, so I don't think board members could vote until they are sworn.
Right. Well, right, so they would just have to be sworn in, like you said, December 3 or 4. I think the bigger issue would be the distributing of any information, because they would need time to prepare. But my point is, they could pretty much get all of the information, except perhaps personnel matters. So instead of canceling the meeting in its entirety, we, one option would be just to cancel the closed session and conduct anything that could be conducted in open session and just not have personnel matters that meeting. So cancel personnel matters. They could still conduct the rest of the meeting. Another option would just be to delay the board meeting by one week, instead of canceling it altogether. That way, they could be sworn in, they could get the materials, and it would just cost them a week. But really, I think they could do pretty much the whole meeting except for personnel matters. So I would move to amend the motion to cancel only the closed session for the December 4 meeting and include the following agenda items in open session: selection of board president, discussion of the permanent superintendent search, and discussion of the budget process. One other piece I wanted to add in here is, per Maryland code, it says, "At the first meeting of the county board in December of each year, the county board shall elect a chair and vice chair from among the members." So if that is in Maryland code, that would be a requirement.
So the first meeting, in that instance, would be December 18?
Well, it might be. You know, but typically, we have two meetings, so.
Okay, Mrs. Causey.
Thank you. I wanted to ask a question.
Oh, wait a minute, there was a motion. So a motion to amend. Is there a second to that motion to amend?
Could the motion be restated, please?
I move to amend the motion to cancel only the closed session for the December 4 meeting and include the following agenda items in open session: selection of the board president, discussion of the permanent superintendent search, and discussion of the budget process.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, now, okay, we'll have discussion on the motion to amend, to have no closed session, selection of officers, and discussion of superintendent search and budget. Mrs. Miller, I would suggest that one of the concerns that I had to put this on the agenda was that board members may not be sworn yet, so they wouldn't be able to vote on all those things, because you can't be a board member until you're sworn. So the intent is nothing other than to afford opportunity for new board members to be sworn, because they have to go to the courthouse and all that stuff, then get materials, and then be prepared for a board meeting. But, okay, any other discussion on the motion to amend? Mrs. Causey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had questions for Mr. Nussbaum related to the timing of swearing in of new members. Is it, is there any reason that new board members who would be elected on November 6 and then known on November 7, and then also our nominating commission will have done their work submitting eight names to the governor, and then the governor is required to respond within 30 days by the end of October? So those board members would be known. Is there any reason that those then-known board members after November 7 could not be sworn in at the same time that other board members are serving?
Yeah, the statute says that our current board's term ends on December 3. So you can't be sworn in to take a seat of something that the current board is there until December 3.
Okay, so then, if knowing these things in advance, that the current board member's term ends on December 3, then we could have a swearing in scheduled on December 3 and have our, as has been done for board members in the past, you have the swearing in in the morning, and then you have your orientation and receive your materials and so forth, and then we could in fact have the meeting on December 4.
That's all possible. Absolutely.
It's all possible. Well, then, I would suggest that we plan on that, because as a board member who is trying to return to the board, that having more time for the new board to receive information and to start discussions is going to be better than delaying it.
And you, just so you know, you too would need to be sworn in, because your term expires.
Being a board member that went through that process, being sworn in in the morning, getting a device and printed material in the afternoon for meeting that evening, was rushed, I would say, for one person. If you're trying to do that for 11 people, that's going to be hectic.
Mrs. Hen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would ask Mrs. Miller if she'd consider amending her motion to reschedule the first meeting in December to the 11th, postponing that by one week, so that there would still be two meetings in December, the 11th and the 18th.
I'd like to have a vote on this motion first, and I can always offer another motion.
All right, so the motion to amend is to have no closed session on December 4, selection of chair on December 4, report on the search for a new, for a permanent superintendent, and discussion of budget. All in favor?
I have some questions. I mean, some more.
I thought you already discussed your issues.
Well, I did, but then there was some more discussion, so.
Mrs. Miller.
To respond, because there seems to be some confusion, is people are saying that they wouldn't, the board members would not get their materials till after they were sworn in. The whole point of canceling the closed session is so that they would get their materials the week prior, the Wednesday prior, just like the public will. So they'll already have the materials that will be relevant to that.
So they would have to get them as the public, they wouldn't be able to get them?
That's fine, because there would be no closed session, and that is the point of this motion, is to, instead of canceling the whole meeting, really, all we'd have to cancel is the closed session. Anything that could be pulled out of the closed session, which would be pretty much anything other than personnel matters, could be conducted in open session. They would have their materials on the Wednesday prior, so all it would be, will be making sure that they were sworn in on either the 3rd or the 4th. And to that point, we could also arrange for swearing in ceremony, potentially, here at Greenwood prior to the meeting on the 4th. Take care of it all in one shot. So that would really solve all of the issues, instead of robbing them of two critical weeks.
Okay, are we ready for the vote on the motion to amend? All in favor of Mrs. Miller's motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Four, all opposed. One, two, three, four, five, six, the motion fails. Now, Mrs. Hen, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I move that we schedule the first meeting in December for December 11.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Causey.
I think it's absolutely necessary for the new board to meet sooner rather than later. And so I would support Julie's motion. I would then also be following up with the motion that the swearing in would be scheduled for December 3, so that the new board members would then have a full week to digest any new information, any new materials, and also anything that would be then covered in the closed session meeting.
All right, I'm treating Mrs. Hen's motion as a motion to amend. All right? I'm treating Mrs. Hen's motion as a motion to amend.
As far as the swearing in, this board doesn't have any control over that. The swearing in is dominated by the clerk of court.
That's right.
So you can't really schedule a swearing in without having the clerk of court weigh in on when she's available to do it.
Well, who arranged the swearing in of the other board members previously?
Well, it's done in coordination with the board office, but it's the clerk of court that schedules the swearing in.
But it's initiated by the board through Ms. Decker, so that this board could put that in motion of Ms. Decker to have that plan in motion.
They can request it, but again, the decision's going to have to come from the clerk who doesn't swear in.
Yes, and has the clerk ever denied us of when we wanted to do a swearing in?
All right, other discussion. Mrs. Miller.
I was going to say something on this, on that point. Okay, my other point was, I'd ask Ms. Hen to amend her motion to include those agenda items, make sure that they are on the agenda for the open session, which would be selection of board president, discussion of the permanent superintendent search, and discussion of the budget process.
Mr. Nussbaum.
I really think it's inappropriate for this board to set an agenda for a board, for a new board that's going to be meeting in December.
Okay.
I think that's an appropriate aspect of the board.
So the motion to amend is to reschedule the December 4 meeting for December 11.
I'd like to respond to that, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Is there more discussion on the motion to amend from December 4 to December 11? Mrs. Hen.
I would just ask that if this board doesn't set the agenda without the new board in place, who would set the agenda for the first meeting of the new board?
They can't set it.
They can't set it. It has to be public and published prior to the meeting for the first time.
Okay, further discussion on the motion to amend. Mrs. Causey.
So, Mr. Chair, to come to a clarification of this question, who will set the agenda for the December 11 meeting? It would be the current chair of the board in consultation with the superintendent to set the upcoming meeting.
I would only think that somebody has to set the agenda, so I would think it would be the current chair and the superintendent.
Thank you for that clarification.
So, the motion is to push the first meeting in December from December 4 to December 11. Further discussion on that? Mrs. Hen.
I amend my motion to set the agenda to include the three items that Mrs. Miller mentioned.
All right, so the chair and the superintendent set the agenda, not the motion. So let's get a calendar done, and let's deal with it. So the motion is to move the meeting from December 4 to December 11. All in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Opposed? One. Abstain? One. So the motion carries, the meeting will be reset from December 4 to December 11. Next on our agenda is agenda item K, new business. I invite Dr. Fran Allen to come forward to present personnel matters.
Good evening, Chairman Gillis, Superintendent White, and members of the board. I would like consent for the following personnel matters: retirements, resignation, leaves of absence, to cease recognition of service, and area education advisory council appointment.
Do I have a motion to approve that personnel matters is presented on items K1 through 5?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. All right. Next on our agenda is administrative appointments. Mrs. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chairman Gillis, members of the board, I would like to bring forward, for your approval, the following administrative appointments: principal Carroll Manor Elementary School principal, Oakley Elementary School principal, Orem's Elementary School, assistant principal Middle River Middle School, and assistant principal Weldwood International.
Do I have a motion to approve the administrative appointments as presented in Exhibit L?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Mrs. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to congratulate and ask these folks to please stand to be recognized along with their family members if they have them. The first, we have Angela McNelly, who will be the new principal of Carroll Manor Elementary School. Congratulations. Do you have family and friends here with you tonight?
Yes.
You can stand and introduce them.
This is my husband, Chris, my son Evan, my son Logan, my mom and dad, Mickey and John, and my sister Maria.
Congratulations. I'd also like to recognize Cynthia Matheny, who will be the new principal of Oakley Elementary School. Have friends and family here with you tonight?
I do. I have my husband Eric, my AP counterpart from Baltimore Highlands, Dana Bister, and my principal and mentor, I am, and then I have lots of family watching.
Congratulations. I'd like to introduce Alexander Paredes, who will be the new assistant principal at Weldwood International School.
Are you with you tonight?
Yes. I have my parents, my wife Amy, my assistant principal, Krista Gronak, my current principal, Cady Thomas, and my new principal, Jory O'Neil.
Congratulations. I'd also like to congratulate Evan Rothman, who will be the assistant principal of Middle River Middle School. Evan, who do you have here with you tonight?
I have my fiancee, Jamie Burge, my father who came down from New Jersey.
Wow.
My new principal, Shannon Parker.
Congratulations. And I'd also like to recognize Matthew Winneker, who will be the new principal of Orem's Elementary School. And who do you have here with you tonight?
I have my wife, Ally, here, and my current principal, Chuck Anderson.
Congratulations. You, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Thanks. Next on our agenda is Item M, Contract Awards, and I ask Mr. McDaniel to report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, the Board's Building and Contracts Committee met earlier this evening. Items 2 through 6, Items 8 through 12 are being forwarded with recommendation to the full board. Items 1, 7, 13, and 14 are being forwarded without recommendation.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve Items M 2 through M 6 and M 8 through M 12? No seconds?
Mr. Chair, could we break those out? Do them individually?
Everyone?
Yes.
All right. The first item that we have on our contract agenda is M 1. That's MWE 838-15. Mrs. Miller.
Thank you. First, generally speaking, I'd again like to mention that the board has not received the actual contracts or bid documents to review again. So this, the first one is on leveled literacy intervention, and there was a lot of concern expressed by the Decoding Dyslexia Group and others, and I did watch that portion of the, the Contracts Committee. However, I believe that there are still additional concerns on that, and a couple of them are the disparity between, you know, how much is being put towards OG, which was 200,000 versus 5 million for the leveled literacy. So could you maybe tell us how many students are being serviced by the OG currently or by that amount for the OG, and how many will be serviced?
Mrs. Miller, I should have started, actually, with having Mr. Saris present the item because I know that Mrs. White also wants to say something to introduce, and I know that Megan Shea is here to speak as well. So, Mr. Saris, is there more that you need to introduce, or may I just ask Mrs. White to speak?
Just that this is a contract modification requesting an increased spending authority of $3.78 million with the bidder, vendor that was approved by the board in August of 2016.
In a 10-year term?
This is a, through 2025, yes, through 2025.
Okay. Now, Mrs. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks to Megan Shea as well for presenting information. I know that there were some questions that were raised, and so Ms. Shea has done a nice job to explain many of those aspects during the Contracts Committee. We want to make sure that everyone has the information that's needed because, as you know, literacy is quite a priority of this administration, and we want to make sure that all of our teachers have the resources that they need to meet each of the needs of our students, particularly when it comes to the various processes of reading. And so we want to make sure that we have those resources. So, Ms. Shea, will you take us through, again, the overview so that there aren't any lingering questions?
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify. So what we talked about earlier is essentially trying to clarify some of the confusion around the differences between some of the programs that have already been mentioned. So whether it's leveled literacy intervention or Orton Gillingham, I partner very closely with the Office of Special Education and with our community partners, some of whom are on decoding dyslexia, to ensure that we're meeting the needs of all of our striving readers. The first way that we do that, that we have really devoted a lot of time and energy into is identifying screening tools so that teachers can fully understand what is at the root of causing reading difficulty, because our students strive as readers for a variety of reasons, and it's important to understand that part of our efforts are to ensure that students who are striving as readers get an intervention program that matches their needs. And so to that end, we've identified screening tools and provided training for reading specialists, special educators, department chairs, and reading contacts at elementary, middle, and high school, as well as the professional learning opportunities afforded through the letters modules that you've heard us speak about, and also through the Orton Gillingham training. The results of those diagnostics help us to understand the needs of our readers, and I'm going to use broad strokes because it's more nuanced than that, but potentially have needs in one of two broad areas. They have needs in the areas of decoding, which is phonics and phonemic awareness, or quite literally learning how to put sounds together into words. And then we have students who have mastered decoding and can actually read the words but struggle in the areas of fluency vocabulary and comprehension. The needs of these two profiles of a reader, as you will, are different from an instructional standpoint. And so, as we mentioned before, students who are diagnosed with dyslexia have often very high IQs, are characterized by often high intelligence, but have areas specifically in the areas of decoding. And so their instructional needs are a structured literacy approach, which takes a very systematic and explicit approach to teaching phonological awareness and phonics. We have brought several different contracts. So I know you've mentioned a dollar value for Orton Gillingham, but there are several other contracts that address this population of students. Students with decoding needs, that also includes students with dyslexia. The Orton Gillingham contracts have been provided for professional learning. They are not providing materials for classroom instruction, but rather professional learning for teachers, reading specialists, and special educators. We are actually expanding that next year in partnership with the Office of Special Education and are pleased to say that we're going to be able to provide Orton Gillingham training for every reading specialist in every elementary school. Our goal had been to try to have one person in every school trained in Orton Gillingham. We're going to be able to have, at a minimum, of two people in every school trained. But in addition, we have also recently bought forward contracts that the board has thankfully approved for programs such as Just Words. That is also to serve students who have needs in the areas of phonics and phonemic awareness, including students that may have a diagnosis of dyslexia. In addition, we have currently in classrooms Foundations and Wilson, both of which address students with phonemic awareness and phonics or areas of need in the area of decoding. We do also have striving readers who have needs in the area of reading, so they are not proficient readers yet, but they indicate on those decoding surveys or on the screening tools I mentioned earlier that they have, in fact, mastered decoding. Their needs are more in the areas of fluency vocabulary and comprehension. Leveled literacy intervention is a program that has been effective for students that do not have decoding needs. So, again, I would not provide that for students with a diagnosis of dyslexia. It would not be appropriate. But just like the folks at Decoding Dyslexia have been such passionate advocates, that one-size-fits-all can't be our approach for reading intervention, we also need to understand that Orton Gillingham as an approach will not be what's best for all students in intervention. I agree that structured literacy as an approach for explicit and systematic phonics is appropriate for all students in the primary grades, but this is about students who have demonstrated through the screening tools that they have mastered the code but need additional support. In addition, I'd like to further clarify, because we keep talking about that number of 5 million, I am not putting forward a purchase order for $5 million. That is not the amount that I'm spending. In fact, the first purchase order that I'm looking to put forward is for leveled libraries. I'm looking to buy books for first-grade classrooms to support striving readers, because what we know is no matter what intervention they're in, they need lots and lots of books to practice that reading that's at their level so that they can improve. The reason for that increased spending authority over time is that in addition to purchasing these level texts, we are next year piloting. This board has asked us multiple times to pilot different interventions, in particular in secondary. And so as part of that plan for next year, we had purchased Just Words, thanks to the generosity of the board, for addressing decoding needs in every school, but then we are piloting different programs to address the needs in comprehension in secondary. LLI is just one of the programs that we wish to pilot that this purchase, that this increased spending authority would allow us to do. If those, pending the results of those pilots, if LLI proved to be successful for students, then we would want to be able to purchase it for all middle and high schools. But that's based on the results of the pilot next year. So the spending authority is different than the amount of money that I'm planning to spend or hoping to spend to provide books for the classrooms in first grade.
Now, now that there's been a presentation, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you. All right, so I want to understand, so how much, that you said the first purchase order would be for the, the books.
Correct.
How much are you expecting that to be in dollar amount?
It's around $5,000 for each school, so for the 107 Kern Elementary Schools, it would be a little over $500,000. And, and that was money that was given to us in this year's budget, so I'm ready to go.
So that's not part of this contract?
This is just to increase the spending authority to allow me to spend that money on that purchase.
So it is part of this contract?
Yes.
$500,000, okay. And then the pilot next year, will that just be a one-year pilot, or how long will that be?
So, depending on the results of the pilot, our plans are to pilot for at least a year, but we would want to monitor how the students are performing in a variety of settings and also check in with our teachers about whether or not we feel we have enough data to make a decision moving forward.
Okay, so if we piloted for one year, how much are we talking about of that spending authority?
So the leveled literacy intervention kits themselves usually are between $2,503,000 for a kit. And so what would happen then is I would have to work with schools to identify how many students have qualified for reading intervention to determine the number of kits. So as we were working towards this, we were figuring that there might be two kits per school. So we tried to ballpark, to be honest with you, because we tried to predict in order to identify a spending authority that would be reasonable. So we have 52 secondary schools, so you can continue to see where we're going with that. In addition, these leveled materials, if we were, and I'm, to continue to provide these leveled texts that I talked about, that's $500,000 specifically for grade 1. So we would, we do want to continue to flood classrooms with texts at primary levels to allow students of various reading abilities that opportunity to practice. So we had also calculated in the spending authority an additional potential spend of classroom libraries in future years to align to other grade levels as well.
Okay, so for those kits, how much are you projecting?
So I would say about $5,000 per school in secondary schools with about, well, 5 times 52. Someone do the math, man, it's 2.5 million. Am I close? All right.
So about 2.5 million?
Yes.
Okay. And then after that, so basically, half of the spending authority would be the pilot.
No, it would be after the pilot, if the pilot proved successful and we decided to expand it to all middle and high schools. I would not be spending 2.5 million on a pilot.
So those kits are not part of the pilot?
We would need...
Just so we're clear, 5 times 50 is 250.
Oh, 250,000. I got around, I got ahead of myself. Thank you.
250,000.
So I think what you're asking me is that we would, based on the results of the pilot, whether or not we would spend it to expand to all schools. I do need the increased spending authority to buy the kits for the three schools that are planning to pilot it next year.
Okay, so we're talking about the books for 500,000, the kits for about another 250,000.
Yes.
That's somewhere in the ballpark of $750,000. And then, if those pilots go well, then the rest of the spending authority would be for expansion after that. Does that sound right? Is that, am I...
How about, let me go back. So the first purchase order is for about 550,000 for the leveled classroom libraries for first grade. There's potential to expand that for additional grades, including second and third grade, and possibly kindergarten. So that would be another 1.5 million. Now am I doing the math right? Mr. Gillis can help me.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. We need an additional three kits to support the three schools that are planning to pilot the LLI intervention next year. Each kit is between 2,500 and 3,000, depending on the level. We wanted to buy two kits per school because we had identified at least two classes in those three pilot schools that would use the material. So that would be roughly another $15,000. Depending on the results of that pilot, we may then, in the future, want to expand the purchase of leveled literacy intervention to include the other, the total 52 middle and high schools. The other piece that I should add on here in terms of spending authority is that schools also use their funds. So when we first purchased the leveled literacy intervention in grades 1, 2, and 3 in previous years, we purchased between 1 and 2 kits per school, depending on the size of the school. Individual elementary schools found the program to be so supportive and successful, they then used their own funds through Title 1 and through operating budget to purchase additional kits at their school, which had an impact on the spending authority. And so we're trying to allow for that as well.
Okay, so what I'm getting at is, there's money for piloting, and then there's money for expansion if the piloting goes well.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
I want to understand how much we're spending on piloting and how much of that spending authority would be for the expansion if the pilot went well?
The pilot would cost approximately $15,000. All the rest of the money would be for the leveled text materials, for the leveled libraries, and pending the results of the pilot, the expansion of LLI in middle and high schools as needed.
Okay, so potentially, the board could say, let's just pilot this thing for a year. Instead of having a term that goes out for the next seven years and we're giving a spending authority of $5 million, why don't we give a spending authority of 15,000 for a one-year term, and then we'll do another contract for an expansion? Why...
Again, so, Mrs. Miller, this is to provide books for our children. So is there a reason why we would not want to provide books?
There's a reason that we would not want to give spending authority to $5 million upfront when we could just give the spending authority for a pilot for a year for 15,000.
So just to be clear, just to be clear, Mrs. Miller...
Let me just answer the question. The reason is that we want to be a fiscally responsible board.
So just to be clear, the, the already authorized monies are 1.5. The request is for an additional 3.7. All right, Mrs. Causey.
Well, can I answer the question about why we don't just want 15,000? That would prevent me from buying the libraries for the first-grade classrooms. It would allow me to buy, if we only increased it by 15,000, I could do the pilot. I would not be able to buy classroom libraries for first graders.
And that would be 550,000.
Correct.
So, again, we could even include that, and it would be far less, we would still be well under $1 million. We would just be barely over half a million dollars instead of authorizing 5 million right upfront.
Mrs. Causey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the issues that Ann points out, that Ms. Miller points out correctly, is fiscal responsibility. As we look over what we have here, which is not a contract, but it is a contract summary, and the contracts actually follow and we don't see them, what we have is the... and the contracts actually follow and we don't see them, what we have is the, we're authorizing contract spending authority. And apparently, the previous contract spending authority of 1.5 million has already been overspent. Total contract expenditures to date are 1.9 million. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, to the point of fiscal responsibility, we're talking about increasing spending authority of 3.7 million. So, as a board, in terms of understanding all the needs and how we need to spend money, it is concerning that we have these large spending authorities over a lengthy amount of time, when in fact, there are excess expenditures that do take place. And the other concern is, if you are doing a pilot, at what point will the board get the results of the pilot before the spending authority is utilized?
So, may I? Okay, so, there's two pieces that I want to share with that. Part of the overspend was what I shared about schools. So, that was because it was a resource that schools found to be so helpful for students and had positive results, they used school funds to continue to spend that. And part of why we brought that back is to demonstrate that fiscal responsibility, that we need to do a better job of accounting for that in our ask. So, when Ms. Miller was asking me questions about what I plan to spend, I have to recognize that as the central office, I'm only one piece of that puzzle. So, that is a part of our efforts to do just that. In terms of your question about data, even if I have spending authority, I don't have any money until I come back to all of you and share the results of the data and talk about how I want to use funds to support that need. My plan would be to come back, either through the curriculum committee or the board, to share the results of those pilots, because I'm piloting at the request of the board and talking about how we want to do a better job of looking at everything that's out there to support secondary striving readers in particular.
So, based on the plan for the pilot, when would you see the board getting results reported?
I would say spring. And the reason that I say that is because I have to train teachers and make sure all the materials are in the hand, sorry, that they are up and running. So, I would estimate that we would be able to begin following that data as early as October. We would like to wait until after. I could come back mid-year and report on how it's going so far, but I think in terms of giving students enough time, we also don't want to have a knee-jerk reaction. Kids who have been striving readers are, have not made a year's, gained a year's time for several years, and we want to make sure that we're giving the program enough time to impact students. So, my best estimate would be May or June.
And what metric are you using? Are you using the, the fall and winter map, or are you using other specific tests?
So, that's a part of my partnership with the RIA, so we have been in conversation with them. We try to use multiple data points, both internal, so how are they responding within the program itself, but then-
And the other, the other issue with the amount of expenditure is, not that we don't want books in the hands of every child, because we certainly do-
Great.
People have certainly heard that from me, and I've, you know, been, you know, on my school visits where the teachers and administrators, for a lot of them, that that is a very key component of their success in advancing literacy.
Yes.
The, but one of the issues is, and this relates to our decoding dyslexia folks and advocates, is they're not saying one-size-fits-all. They don't want all decoding intervention supports, but to make sure that we're spending money in a balanced approach. So, going back to the issue that you did touch on, which is the screening, when will the board get information about the screening? So, in terms of, with our struggling readers, what percentage of them have decoding issues? What percentage of them have the fluency issues? When would you expect that that would be-
So, as I shared earlier in contracts committee, that's a new process for us to dig even deeper. We used to group striving readers, and so, we're pleased to be able to even start to collect that data. We've been going out and meeting with individual schools. I would think in the fall, we will have new entrants, so we will have new students that have come in. We will also have new data results back from state testing that may identify students that are new to being identified as needing reading intervention, at which point, we would administer screening to those students as well. I think my best bet would be to tell you in the fall who we have currently in the seats, what percentage of them are receiving instruction based on decoding, and what percentage of them are based, are receiving instruction based on comprehension.
So, you have done screening this past school year?
We have just done screening in secondary in May and June. So, this type of screening. So, in the past, we have identified students as needing reading intervention using data points such as MAP and PARC, and teacher recommendation. The screening I'm talking about digs into a deeper level of addressing whether the issue is in decoding or comprehension. That is a new piece that we have put in place in the middle and high schools, and that we purchased through their partnership with Special Education for every school and provided training.
So, what about the elementary school students? When is screening done for this type of-
So, we do universal screening in kindergarten using the DIBELS Next assessment, and then we continue to use that screening for readers that are striving in first grade. What I can tell, and then also for readers below grade level up through second grade. This same Beginning Advanced Decoding Survey is new for, it went with the Just Words training, that contract that was new this year. So, that is a new process to screen at that level. We've used running records, which I've shared in this space before, to help listen to a child read and identify areas of deficit. The Beginning and Advanced Decoding Survey helps us to really dig into specific decoding needs. That was a new process for intermediate teachers in the elementary school as well.
Okay, thank you. And I'm really glad to hear about the expansion of the Orton-Gillingham to every reading-
Me too.
-specialist in elementary school.
Yes.
That's going to really help a lot. So, thank you for all of that explanation.
Agreed. Sure.
Mrs. Miller has her hand up again before she asks more questions. Does anyone else have a question on this contract number one? Mrs. Miller.
Thank you. Yeah, I hadn't completed my line of thought before. So, if, and I want to understand how this works, and maybe Mr. Saris would be the best person here. If the board approved the full 5 million, which would include the expansion, then does that remove the requirement of the central office then to come back to the board with the pilot results to then make the request for the expansion?
Well, right now, we do not have a budget to pay for $5 million worth of this product. Our textbook budget for one year is approximately $4 million, and so, a number of needs will be met. And in any one year, of course, we will be limited by that, but if the board were to grant the spending authority, we would not need to come back for more spending authority, but we would honor our commitment, obviously, to provide you with the information that we've discussed tonight.
Okay, but it would no longer be a decision of the board. You would come back and say, we've looked at the pilot, we deem it to be successful, we're not asking for any more money, we're just letting you know. So, that would be the difference?
Yeah.
I disagree. I think that even though spending authority is approved, if the report comes on the pilot and the board wishes to terminate a contract, all contracts are terminable at will.
Well, but that's, that's another step.
That's another step, yes. So, the answer to your question, though, is no.
The steps. Well, it's yes, because it would change the steps. They wouldn't have to come back to us for additional spending authority, just like you said, and it would take an active vote of the board then to terminate, rather than an active vote of the board to approve. So, it would be a whole, a different process. That's my understanding.
I would still have to ask for the money, though.
Further questions?
Yes, I'm not done. I was beginning to talk, to ask about how many students are serviced by Orton-Gillingham with the 200,000 versus this. How many would be served?
So, as I mentioned, the Orton-Gillingham is training provided to teachers. So, the data that we collect is about the number of teachers. I don't have that in front of me, because it's a collaboration with Special Education. I can tell you, in terms of the numbers that we've served in LLI in the last two years, that in the 16, 17 school year, we had just under 3,000 students that were in the leveled literacy intervention in grades one, two, and three. This year, that number is smaller, but because our reading specialists are working right up to the last day, I'm still receiving their data about the progress that their students have made in LLI, so I don't have the final numbers. I can tell you that so far, the number was closer to 2,000 across first, second, and third grade, which is also great news, because we've had a number of students exit the intervention, which is always the plan with reading intervention.
So, you can't really compare those kind of apples to oranges?
Correct.
All right. I mean, because that was one of the concerns, was there, there's this discrepancy in the investment between Orton-Gillingham-
I think there's also a difference in what we're purchasing, the difference between the professional learning and the actual materials for instruction.
There was also, apparently, an NIH study that was done that looked at over 400,000 struggling readers. They said the percentage of readers with fluent decoding, with comprehension problems, is about 10 to 15 percent. So, I guess that's a small, that indicates a small amount, and I knew you had talked about that. Maybe you can address that a little bit?
So, I can tell you anecdotally, because as I mentioned, that level of screening is higher, but as we've gone out to schools, I've had some schools where it was less than 20 percent, so it may have been 15 to 20 percent. And I've had schools where it's been 50 percent. Half of the students in intervention needed decoding and half did not. Again, I don't have those final numbers, but I can tell you anecdotally, the staff in the English Language Arts Office and the staff in Special Education have been going out to schools to support teachers and staff with analyzing that data and helping to group students so that they're in appropriate interventions, which is really exciting work and new work. I'll have better data on those specifics once we finish crunching those numbers, but I can tell you that it varies. Students end up needing reading intervention for a variety of reasons.
So, if the board wanted to separate out the expansion and only approve what would be required to get the pilot going, you know?
And my books.
What, what spending, what additional spending authority would be required?
For me to be able to purchase the leveled classroom libraries for first grade and to fund the pilot, I would say around $600,000.
Okay, but there's already been-
Right, then we would also have to account for the overspending, correct. Yep.
And there was overspending.
Yes.
So, just, if, if the board wanted to do this incrementally and just approve the 600,000 for a one-year term-
Well, it'd have to be the-
Right?
How do we handle that overspending?
Well, we would have 600,000 plus 15,000 plus 430,000, which would be 1,045,000.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, any further questions? All right, the, the motion is to approve item M1. All in favor of approving M1, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, please keep your hands up so I can count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, the motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is item M2, and that is JBO 731-18. Mr. Saris.
This is a new contract to provide for the expansion of the International Baccalaureate Primary Years Programs, Middle Years Programs, Diploma Programs, and the establishment of career programs, all including professional development. Approval is requested for a five-year contract with one recommended bidder and contract spending authority of $2,294,120.
Is there a motion to accept or approve M2?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, no need for a second, of course. Discussion. All in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Opposed? Motion carries. M3, Mr. Saris, is KSH 360-18.
Yes, this is a new contract for mathematics supplemental intervention materials and professional development for staff. Approval is requested for a five-year contract with three recommended bidders and spending authority of $600,000.
Is there a motion to accept M4?
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. M4, Mr. Saris, is JBO 712-18.
This is a new competitively bid contract for a web-based college and career counseling tool for the Office of School Counseling. Approval is requested for a five-year contract with a five-year extension with one recommended bidder and contract spending authority of $1,954,702.
Is there a motion to approve M4?
So moved.
Discussion. Mrs. Miller.
By my read of this, when I look at the annual expenditures, we're 110,000. It looks to me that this contract is going to be about four times more expensive than the contract it's replacing.
The annual expenditures for the most recent two years of the contract are approximately $141,000, and the annual expenditures under the renewed contract with current pricing will be approximately $188,000 a year. So, yes, it's about a 33 percent increase driven by the, the current pricing structure proposed by this vendor.
That's not how I was seeing it, and I got to figure out where I came up with that, but-
Well, 110,000 is the mathematical average which we put in the exhibit, and I'm just, the program did not start with all grades in years one and two, which were about $130,000 a year. So, the most recent comparison for the full implementation is the 141,000 relative to the 188,000 annual fee under the new agreement, and this is, the pricing is based on a 10-year term. So, the 188,000 times 10 years is what brings us to the 1.9 million.
Okay, because I was looking at five years, that's why. Okay, thank you. Also, is there a difference in what's being provided to the middle school students versus the high school students?
I'll have to ask Dr. Wisted to come up and answer that question.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, the product's the same, the children at different grade levels use it differently.
Okay.
So, you know, when they get to the high school level, they use more of that college career preparedness of it. At the middle school level, they're really just beginning to use the survey tools and things.
Okay. And of the four responding bidders, where did Naviance fall in the cost? Because it, it doesn't seem to be going by cost, and I got to find what it says here. Offering the most favorable proposal. I don't know what that means.
So, I can share with you the, you know, as he's looking up the cost, the, there was one piece of this product that the other bidders did not have, and Josie could probably share a little more detail about what that was, but the, the college acceptance and application piece, where they're able to upload the transcripts and letters of recommendation, that was something that really stood out with this product that the others did not have.
Okay, so where did Naviance fall in the costs?
Yeah, I don't have that information with me tonight.
Further questions? Mrs. Cozy, question?
I would just like to make a comment that with two recent graduates, that the Naviance software is, is very helpful, and as Josie attests to the college acceptance and letter, it, it really does assist the students, and I am interested if you could give us the relative pricing data, even though we'll vote on this tonight, just for informational purposes. But having that one extra module, I can see having extra value, but also the fact that our counselors have used this for how many years?
At least the last five years that we've had the contract.
So, there's an aspect of training and familiarity that, that's helpful, but I would like to see that information, and that is something that would be helpful. We, we do see comparative data, and we'll see it in a contract that comes up relative to construction. So, we have question why we don't see it on some of these other things, so is that-
Because this is not a low-bid pricing-
Right.
-proposal.
Yes, but- Yes, but that being said, we still have to do our due diligence with cost-benefit analysis, with what is the benefit to the student versus the additional cost if it is a higher, if it is a higher-cost product. For all we know, this may be, have this additional module that's very helpful to our students and our counselors and be a lower cost, but we don't, we don't know that.
Well, I can just share with you that that was what really stood out when they looked at the other products, that that piece was there and none of the other products had anything like that.
Ms. Schaefer, did you?
So if I could, so Naviance, it's the only thing that Common App allows you to connect with. So once you wave your FERPA on Naviance, Common App automatically updates with who your guidance counselor is, and then Naviance, you can request transcripts via Naviance, and then they will upload simultaneously on Common App, and that's the only, like, they don't say. You can connect with Naviance or a different application. It's only Naviance. And so Naviance made it a lot easier to request transcripts and like all of these other things, because Coalition was like a nightmare, because I couldn't do that. So it was really helpful in that way.
So the motion is, Mrs. Hen.
Well, I'd first like to say that I wholeheartedly agree with Mrs. Cosi's comments, that this is a fabulous system, and it was a lifesaver going through the process with my son. So I'm so excited that our students have access to it and that our parents have access to it. My question is, do we offer training to parents on how to use the system to assist students, or is that something we can offer if we currently don't?
Sure, sure. I know that the school counselors are who do different professional learnings, and it's school-based, you know, who would offer what, but we can look into like a systematic way that they do that.
And I would support increased purchasing authority if that is something we could offer to parents, because I would like to see this used to its maximum benefit, and I think that's an audience that could really benefit from it.
Sure.
All right, so the motion is for approval of M4. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries 10 to nothing. All right, number M5, Mr. Saris, is JMI 612-18.
This is a new contract for the replacement and replenishment of textbooks and related curriculum material for schools and offices. Approval is requested for a five-year contract with 15 recommended bidders and contract spending authority of $4 million. And I'll note that these are all materials previously approved by the board through the Curriculum Committee as well, and which have been initially distributed by the central curricular offices for various subject matter, and which schools and offices will primarily use to purchase replacements and replenishments of existing materials.
Is there a motion to approve M5?
So moved.
Discussion. Mrs. Miller.
What's the related curriculum material, and how does it break out textbooks versus related curriculum material?
Well, Ms. Schae can probably provide more details. These would be things like
Maybe I'll just stay. So the eSchool Mall houses a majority of textbooks. Some of the other instructional materials includes things like sentence strips and chart paper, chalk, markers, things like that. But I would say, I don't have an exact percentage, but there are thousands of items, and the majority would be books.
Further discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
And what grant program will be a funding source?
Primarily Title I, because schools are the major user, and the Title I schools have had occasion to use, to buy with their additional school budgets these types of materials, just as they did in the previous exhibit.
Further questions?
So out of that spending authority, how much of that comes out of the operating budget? How much is that is paid through the grant?
Let's see if we have any information on that. I think that when we looked at spending, let's see, I want to say about $150,000 a year for schools was included in this, for Title I schools. So that would be $900,000 over the term.
Out of the grant, you're saying, out of the Title I grants? $900,000. Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? All right, the motion is to approve contract M5. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
One abstention, Mrs. Miller. The motion carries nine to nothing. The next contract, Mr. Saris, is M6, MWE 816-18.
This is a new competitively bid contract to provide the required external evaluation services for the Magnet Schools Assistance Program Grant for the Offices of Educational Options and Magnet Programs. Approval is requested for a five-year contract with one recommended award bidder and contract spending authority of $454,174.
Is there a motion to approve M6?
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor of M6, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Nine to nothing to one, the motion carries. Mr. Saris, M7, JMI 611-18.
This is a new competitively bid contract for which proposals were solicited to provide professional development and coaching to teachers and principals. Approval is requested for a five-year contract with three recommended bidders and contract spending authority of $3 million, all of which is grant-funded, and the grants would be Title IV and the MSAP Magnet Grant.
Is there a motion to approve M7?
So moved.
Discussion. Mrs. Miller.
How many staff members will be professionally developed under the contract?
I'll ask Ryan Embryali to come forward.
Mr. Embryali, please come forward.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So, Mrs. Miller, it would be all of the staff at all of our Magnet School Assistance Program Grant schools. That includes administrators and all the teaching staff. And then it would be all of our administrative staff at all of our high schools, so the administrative teams, in essence.
Further questions about M7?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
And what instructional shifts are being taught?
So at the Magnet School Assistance Program schools, then that is about the International Baccalaureate Program, and then the Health Sciences Program, and so this competitively bid proposal is about inquiry-based instruction, since with the International Baccalaureate Program, it's all about looking at our curriculum and tying in the global perspective, and so the grant works with, through these approved vendors, if this board approves, works with those schools around inquiry-based instruction, and also works with our academic offices to ensure alignment with curriculum.
And is this a federal grant? This is Title IV?
They are both federal grants, yes. Title IV Part A, and then the Magnet School Assistance Program Grant.
Okay.
Further questions? The motion is M7. All in favor of M7, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries nine to one. The next one, Mr. Saris, is M8, which is KSH 355-18.
This is a new competitively bid contract to provide catering services for the new teacher orientation meetings scheduled from August 13th through 16th, 2018. Approval is requested for a one-time purchase and contract spending authority of $27,000.
Is there a motion to approve M8?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor of M8, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries 10 to nothing. Mr. Saris, number M9, is KSH 359-18.
This is a new cooperative contract with Carroll County Government to provide for excess workers' compensation insurance for the Office of Human Resources Operations. Approval is requested for a one-year contract with the option to extend for two additional one-year periods, a total of three years, with one recommended bidder and contract spending authority of $1.8 million.
Is there a motion to approve M9?
So moved.
All right, discussion on M9. Mrs. Miller.
Why is the spending authority $900,000 per year when last year's premium was under $600,000?
This is for a three-year term, at which we've estimated approximately $600,000 per year. The current premium, $581,668, is what we base this on. We've already gotten a quote for next year at $616,000, which we are evaluating.
Okay, thank you.
I need a further discussion. All in favor of M9, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 10 to nothing, M9 passes. Contract M10, MBU 50817.
This is a consent to the assignment of this contract from Quaker City Paper Company to Rubin Industrial Company Incorporated, doing business as Lewis Industrial Supplies. This is one of 12 bidders on the original contract approved by the board in January 2017, and is the result of a corporate merger.
Is there a motion to approve M10? Discussion. All in favor of M10, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries 10 to nothing. Mr. Saris, number 11, is MWE 818-18.
This is a new contract under Cooperative Administration of Programs for leased office space at the Community College of Baltimore County Randalls Town Campus. Approval is requested for a four-year, two-month contract and contract spending authority of $350,000.
Is there a motion to approve M11?
So moved.
Any discussion? Mrs. Miller.
What is the ESOL Welcome Center?
So I'd like Megan Schae to come forward again.
Do you have your running shoes on there?
I know, I'm coming, I'm coming.
Is there a carpet replacement?
You were right. Mr. Young told me to stay, and I should have listened. So the question was, what does the ESOL Welcome Center do? So we have a variety of things and ways that we service our new English learners and their families. And so at that facility full-time, we have a secretary and a registrar that helps our students register. We also have a bilingual pupil personnel worker that helps with residency verification. And beginning next year, thanks to our People for Our People budget under our superintendent, we will have a social worker, and we will have a nurse. And so on a typical day at the ESOL Center, we start with a screening interview where the registrar reviews the educational, any kind of educational records that our students may be able to bring with them, to be able to award credit, particularly in high school, but also to help ascertain placement. They help the families complete forms, including registration documents, eligibility for free and reduced meals. They also complete an assessment of English language. So they do an assessment of English language for all students, and then they also do a non-verbal math placement test for high school students. In addition, they do, when we have the social worker and the nurse, we will be able to offer health screenings, referral to clinics, and in some cases, limited immunizations for our families. And our social worker will be able to provide wraparound services to help our families line up with community-based services that they may not be aware of or that they may not be able to access due to the language barrier.
Are there further questions about M11? All in favor of M11, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries 10 to nothing. Mr. Saris, M12, is MBU 516-18.
MBU 516-18 is for demolition of existing Colgate Elementary School. The demolition is needed in order for us to have site prepared to build a new school.
Mr. Saris sounds just like Mr. Dixit. Is there a motion to approve M12? Is there any discussion? Mrs. Cosi.
Thank you, Mr. Dixit. And the company that we're selecting, because it is the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, have we used that company before?
I don't recall using that company before.
I do not either.
But they are qualified, pre-qualified by the county, and they are responsive bidders.
Okay, thank you for that.
Any further discussion on M12? All in favor of M12, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 10 to nothing, M12 passes. M13 is MWE 817-18. I guess that's Mr. Dixit.
Yes, it is.
MWE 817-18 is for request for transfer of property, and I just want to give a little bit of background about what it is. The site at which we are building Honeygo Elementary School is a site that's owned by Baltimore County, and that site is also designated as program open space site. So under the regulations by DNR, anytime we use a open space, program open space site, we have to exchange a site of similar size and similar, and in the same neighborhood, so that we can designate that other site as the program open space site. We have been working, our law office and our staff has been working with county lawyers to make arrangements for the exchange, and as part of that process, we have agreed to exchange overly middle school site, which is a landlocked site and not usable for building a school, but it is, it is good site for program open space purposes.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve M13?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Mr. Verch.
Thank you, Ed. Mr. Dixit, when you say the site where the Honeygo Elementary School is being constructed is a program open space site, what you're, what you're saying is that that land was originally purchased by county government using program open space dollars. Is that correct?
That's correct, and it is designated as program open space.
For that, for the, that exact reason. And if that land is to ever be used for something other than just open space, then there has to be some accommodation made with the state such that there isn't a diminishment in the amount of land available for program open space type activities.
That's correct.
And when you use the term neighborhood, what you really, I think, are saying is relatively close proximity to where the program open space dollars were, or land was, that the, a concurrent, concomitant, like swap land, is relatively close by. And that's just down the road at the overly middle school land bank site. Is that right?
That's correct. It's behind overly high school, and it was proposed for overly middle school.
Correct. And that site itself has its own environmental considerations. If one looks at the attachments that I've seen, one can see kind of steep slope topography, indicative perhaps of a stream valley that may, that may bisect part of the property. So in that sense, there isn't any net loss of program open space recreational land, and there's no net loss really in the general approximate area either. And this then allows us to make use of land where there are students that need a brand-new school.
That's correct.
All right, thank you so much.
Any further discussion on M13? All in favor of M13, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 10 to nothing. Nine to nothing with an abstention. Mr. Saris, ARA 225-18 is M14.
So Mr. Smith and Dr. Brown will be taking my places here.
Dr. Brown, come on down.
Good evening again. Earlier, we presented to you that this is an item that is a part of our process to continue our capital program as we move through. This item has been brought to the board as an exhibit since about 2011, 2012, for your approval, as we continue to work with the State's Department of Planning in order to support the capital request, the CIP that we have submitted to the state. This item here, it represents two plans or two documents which you've received electronically. They're pretty large files that require information related to enrollment, adjacencies, conditions, and a host of other things that are required by the planning office, that Dr. Brown and our offices collaborate with, as well as the county, our county partners. It's the educational facility... county, our county partners. It's the Educational Facilities Master Plan and the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan that we're asking for your approval in order to continue the, our submission of our capital program that is due to the state by this year, July second, but not only the first of each, each July.
Is there a motion to approve M fourteen? There's a motion. Discussion. Mrs. Miller.
I'd just like to point out that this is a five-hundred-page document which we received six days ago. And on top of that, we've had, we have a very full agenda tonight, including curriculum changes, which are thirty-three documents. I mean, we would have to put in full time for six days to review all of what we were given for this one meeting. So for that reason, I'm going to abstain.
Any further discussion?
I think.
Mr. Hayden.
Point raised there is what can we do about that, not to have to experience that? This is not the first time that's happened. And I realize that doesn't speak particularly to the motion, but it does speak to the concern that board members have about not having enough time to review documents.
Mrs. White?
So just to speak to that, I just want to turn this over to Kevin Smith. These are documents that have been generated and in terms of the CMP and the EFMP that the board has been privy to. Correct? Or correct me if I'm wrong.
I'll turn it to Dr. Brown, who'll be to explain as well.
So I am certainly happy to look to see if the timeline could be accelerated in the future. That being said, the vast majority of this document, you've seen before. The why and share of this is an aggregation of information from previous documents, particularly students count, and you've had that for a while. Again, this document is an administrative document that aggregates all that information together that supports the current CIP, not all of which is new. Again, I'm happy, Mr. Hayden, to look to see if we can accelerate the schedule. I will say it is an aggressive schedule, as is, to get this complete and to have our county counterparts and the Department of Planning sign off on it and review it, et cetera. It goes through a lot of hands to get to this point.
So again, this isn't new material, but it is material that has to be submitted as the complete package so that we can take care of the administrative functions of making sure that this material gets to where it needs to be so that we can complete and have our CIP process complete as well.
That is correct.
But in order for us to know what has changed in this document, we would have to review the whole thing. So maybe there could be a summary of changes, and this is also assuming that we have consumed it, the whole thing, in prior years. I mean, that assumption can't, just can't be made.
Mr. Hayden.
I just continue the point that I think somehow it's necessary that we figure out how to give a little more time. And this is a prime example of a number of things that we get caught in where we don't, we get it just before a meeting. And when you have other things to do on a regular basis, and you get it just before the meeting, you're sort of slammed in being able to take the time to do it. So I, I think it's incumbent upon us as a board to ensure that we can get that quicker.
Mrs. Causey, you had your hand up. Do you have comments?
I do, thank you. I had asked earlier in the Building and Contracts meeting about, relative to Towson High School and Delaney High School being on the replacement school list, and I see where they are still listed there.
As is Lansdowne.
On what page is Lansdowne listed?
Sixty-four.
Excuse me?
Sixty-four.
I think that, that was my next point, is it, it's still listed with a limited renovation?
It's listed both ways on sixty-four as a replacement and.
I didn't see that. Is that on the graph, the table?
I believe it's on the graph, yes. It's also in the body of a paragraph in another section as well. I went back and reviewed. Because the timeline of this, I was concerned that perhaps it hadn't been captured in, in this document. It has.
Further questions? Mrs. Causey.
Can you have someone find that page? Because I.
Page sixty-four only listed as a limited renovation.
I'll go back and find the exact page. I think it's sixty, it might be sixty-three. I might be.
Okay, because I have another question, so maybe someone can look that up while I'm asking my other question. Also, earlier, I asked about how is the work of the Sage Policy Group going to impact this document and our work? And you had stated that it was going to be brought to the board by the end of 2018?
The timeline for the Sage Policy Study extends through the, the end of this calendar year. And what we would expect is that the recommendations by Sage Policy Group would inform how we look at our plans for high schools and what gets put into the CIP to address high school needs as we move forward. And that this document would subsequently change to support that based on what's placed into the CIP following that work.
Well, that, that timeframe seems to keep sliding back and back and back, because I was in the understanding that it was going to be presented to the board in time for the deliberations that we need to make and the approvals that we need to make in September for the state capital request. So why is it that that timeframe has slid?
I would just take, keep in mind that the public has asked us to include more public input. If you'll recall, the public has come here and has said that to have only public meetings in July would not give the public enough time or give us enough information. Many times, we would be butting up against vacation schedules. So again, that timeline, there's no sliding. We're being responsive to the public for, to include additional information and feedback from the public, because we've heard from the communities that just having those input meetings over the summer would not allow for that type of input, feedback, or transparency.
But we approved of this contract in December, January, so we've had all of these months of school being in session to conduct community input.
I would have.
I really don't recall when the contract was approved, but I can say that the public has been engaged to date. We have engaged with Sage. We are prepared with the focus, first focus groups that are going to be held next week?
Starting it next week.
Beginning next week. We'll have more gallery walks in July and then extending that into the fall, again, to be responsive to what the public has said that they wanted to make sure that they had more feedback and not butting up against vacation schedules, which is what they asked for, not only here, but in the meetings that we've held with them.
And that calendar is on our webpage that outlines that. And much like we've done with the boundary process, as we move through that process, we will be publishing documents on that webpage to make it very clear and transparent, the process as we work through it.
Mrs. Hayden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in, doing a keyword search through the document, there are five references to Lansdowne High. All of those refer to the project as a limited renovation. There's no mention of a replacement.
I will go back and pull it up. It's, it's a replacement.
I've got it pulled up, and all five references are limited renovation.
I'm saying that I found it five minutes ago when I was sitting at my desk. I might be off by a, a page. I'll pull it up. I'll go back through it for you.
You don't need to.
You don't need to.
We have it up right now.
We have it up. All five refer to it as a limited renovation.
I know that one's in there as a replacement. I, maybe I'm mistaken, but I'll go back and look.
Down Elementary is listed as a replacement. The high school is listed as a limited renovation.
Okay. Further comments? Mr. Hayden.
Can we somehow put it in the minutes that that's what it's supposed to be if there's any question about that point just raised?
Sure.
I mean, this is not rocket science, just.
If there's a correction that needs to be made, we'll make it.
It's a living document, is one that we'll change.
Let's put it on record now so that everybody is.
I mean, if we're being asked to approve it, it needs to be correct.
All right, so any further questions?
If that correction needs to be made, we'll make it.
Further comments? Mrs. Causey.
So when you say that this document is a living document, at what point does it get changed and under whose direction? And at what point is the board informed and/or involved in the changes being made?
Well, I would connect that back to the CIP process, and the overall CIP process informs this document. And this, again, aggregates that in the end. And so the board is informed on annual basis as we revise this document.
So you're saying it's not actually going to be changed during the coming year?
I commit it. If there's an inaccuracy in the document that we need to correct it, we'll correct it.
Well, I'm not talking about the inaccuracy that's going to be corrected. That's.
Some of the changes are changes related to questions and clarifications with the planning offices at the state. So we may have to clarify some items with them that they will ask us to make tweaks in order to make sure that it aligns appropriately to their criteria.
Okay, and is, do you give updates to the board when the state asks you to tweak segments of this?
We have it in the past, because sometimes those are more technical in nature, because it doesn't change the, the actual components of the CIP.
Mr. Hayden, do you want to amend M fourteen's motion to include reference to a, a complete, what's the better word, a full renovation, I mean, a, a new construction at Lansdowne?
You, you did it very well, so that's good.
Very good. Is there a second to that motion to amend?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to amend? All in favor of the motion to amend, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's nine to one. That motion to amend carries now the motion is to approve M fourteen as amended. All in favor of M fourteen as amended, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Opposed? One abstain. One. Eight, one, one. The motion carries. Thank you all. Next on our agenda is item N, consideration of curricula changes. Mr. McDaniel's.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Curriculum Committee, in accordance with board policy, reviews and approves curriculum, instruction materials, and course additions and deletions as part of its normal business. To that end, the Curriculum Committee has reviewed course changes that are listed in the executive summary distributed to the board. And we would ask the board's approval for those changes.
All right, is, do we need a motion for that? I guess we do. Is it? Committee's report is a motion, so discussion on the committee's report, which is a motion. All right, we have item N, curricula changes as reported by Mr. McDaniel's. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
Abstain.
Two abstentions, eight, zero to two. Next on our agenda is a special project request. And for that, I think we call Mr. Roberts.
Good evening, Chair Gillis, Superintendent White, members of the board. Tonight I bring forward for your approval, a special project request, privately funded capital improvement project for the purchase and installation of whiteboard overlays on one of two chalkboards currently in Edgemere Elementary School. That'll be in twenty-seven classrooms. The project is funded entirely by the Edgemere PTA through their fundraising initiative, in line with BCPS policy and Rule seventy-three thirty. So in accordance with this policy, the request has progressed through all normal channels, and I bring forward to you for your approval this evening.
Do I have a motion to approve the whiteboard overlay on classroom chalkboards for Edgemere Elementary School?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight to none. And next is item P, report on Blueprint two point zero. Do you introduce that? Do you want Dr. Brown to come forward? Dr. Brown?
Okay. Good evening, Chair Gillis, Superintendent White, members of the board and the community. I gotta get this out of the way first, Josie. Just had to do it. Pleased to be here with you again this evening to produce or present our annual report on the Blueprint document. This will be the last report on Blueprint two point oh. It's a summary of our progress through the 2016, 2017 year and is a summary for that document as a whole. I will also be presenting an update on our work on dashboards and where we are today with release of dashboards as we move forward. As I go through this, I'm going to work through the four pillars of the Blueprint, as we've done in the past. And I know that it's getting late, and I saw the look on Josie's face, so I will work, work to go quickly through this. So I'll go through academics, safety and security, communication, and then through organizational effectiveness. So starting with academics, our first goal area has five different indicators. Kindergarten readiness, third-grade reading, performance in eighth grade in algebra, SAT, graduation and dropout rates. Those are the five indicators that we have associated with academics. We'll start with kindergarten readiness. We, you know, with this academic area, we sort of bookend a child's journey through our school system, starting in kindergarten and then ending with graduation and readiness for current college. What you'll see with kindergarten readiness is that unfortunately, during this window of time, students were entering kindergarten less and less ready each year. And that really puts a greater burden on our early childhood educators to be able to close that gap by third grade, which is our next indicator. They have to, students have to learn more in less time just to be able to keep up. And to further advance, they actually have to cover, again, cover more ground in the same amount of time compared to their peers in the past. So really pleased to be able to say that during this window of time, we actually saw reading at grade three has improved, both within the year and across years, as we went through this. We looked at MAP, and what we saw was that for our MAP assessments in winter, in particular, scores went up. The average scores on MAP went up, surpassing the prior year's performance. So despite coming into kindergarten less prepared, kids are actually closing the app and excelling compared to their peers over time. Not surprisingly, the proportion of kids that are performing above the national average has increased over time, with fifty-six percent of students being over, at or above the national average on MAP. And those improvements translated to PARC. So as we went from fifteen, sixteen to sixteen, seventeen, we saw an increase in PARC scores for third grade as well. So while kids came into kindergarten less prepared, by the time they started third grade, they were still a little bit behind. By midpoint of third grade, they had caught up and surpassed, and they showed up on PARC at the end of the year as well. When we get to algebra, it's a little different story. The algebra scores, to be, be quite blunt, have been flat. If we look at the, the proportion of students who are getting a B or above in algebra by the end of eighth grade, it's gone up, it's gone down, it's fluctuated a little bit. If we look at that and juxtaposition it to other data, we see that MAP scores for eighth grade, which is a census, touches all kids in eighth grade, those scores have been flat. And our PARC scores for algebra one have been flat over this window as well. So simply put, this is an area that we're going to continue to need to do additional work as we move forward. And I think the superintendent may speak to that later. I'm pleased to say that SAT is, is a little bit different story, that as students have, as we've included more students in the SAT, and I'm really pleased to say that during this window, SAT participation rates went up. They went from eighty-four point eight percent up to eighty-eight point four percent. And that's a significant change. And that window of time that we've increased participation, scores also went up. And that's really very impressive, because oftentimes, folks will believe that if we include more kids in, in a rigorous test, the scores will go down. And what you see here is both on evidence-based reading and writing and mathematics, scores went up, and they went up across all subgroups in both areas. So really fairly impressive that we're including more kids, we're giving more kids the opportunity to demonstrate their current college readiness, and students are doing better. Graduation has remained stable. At the end of the sixteen, seventeen year, our grad rate remained at eighty-nine percent. Right here, we have a, a graph, I've pulled one out in particular, that shows students who receive special services. And again, impressive that we see that students who are receiving free and reduced price launches, their grad rate has been increasing. We look at special ed, the grad rate has been increasing for special ed as well. And I'm really pleased to say that we appear to be turning the corner on our English language learners, and we've shown some increase in the grad rate for English language learners. In addition, the, the gap that existed in the graduation rate between white and black students has been closed and remains, remain closed at the end of the sixteen, seventeen school year. Moving on to safety and security. Obviously, this has been an issue that has bubbled up and has been present, was present tonight in, in the board meeting. It was present in the learning and listening tours as we went around the county. We have five indicators here. They look at suspensions, student safety and security perception, their perceptions of safety and security, emergency plans in buildings, security systems, which sort of get the operational sides of safety, and then student attendance. We've had a lot of folks talk about suspensions. And I think it's important to point out that our suspension rate is five point five. our suspension rate is 5.5%, and that is actually the highest suspension rate that we've had in five years. So, the narrative that's out there that we're not suspending kids is simply not accurate. We actually have the highest suspension rate we've had in five years, and it's actually increased for the last two years. In addition, not only has the rate of suspension increased, but the duration of suspensions has increased as well. 41.1% of our suspensions exceed three days, and that's up nearly five percentage points from 2012, 2013. So, we are suspending more students, and the duration, the time of those suspensions out of school has also increased during this window of time. That's not to diminish or take away from, from folks who've expressed some frustration with things. We have talked about the need to continue to move things forward, but it is also clear that we are holding students accountable, and we have actually been holding more students accountable and with a more rigorous consequence during the past couple of years. Moving forward, during this window of time, we did see some decline in student perceptions of safety, declined 2% from 2015, 2016. Elementary students, not surprisingly, have the strongest feelings of safety that's, that's been maintained throughout this window of time. Where we saw the largest decline, it was really in middle schools, and we see sort of a steady decline in that, whereas high schools remain stable. And this was true, again, over this window of time. In terms of, of the operations, the physical plants of buildings, at this point, all offices and school buildings have safety plans in place. That was not the case when we started. At this point, 96% of schools have completed all 19 of their emergency drills, and that really is a significant improvement, because when we started this, only 58%, in 2012, 2013, only 58% of schools were completing those, those, all those drills that were necessary. And so, we substantially closed the gap on that. I'm also pleased to say that in terms of other operational things connected to the building, all schools now have controlled entry, the key card entries. When we started, you know, there were only about 60% of the buildings that had that, now 100% do. And all buildings have closed circuit TV systems for monitoring. And again, that's up from 70%, or, yeah, up from 70% to 100%. So, we actually have universal, at this point, key card or scan card entry and universal closed circuit TVs monitoring our system. Finally, in terms of safety and security, attendance is, is a good indicator as well in terms of school climate. And while system-wide attendance remains high at about 94% for both elementary and middle schools, and it still remains in the lower 90s for high school, the proportion of individual students who are making, or hitting that 94% has actually gone down a little bit. It's decreased. So, we have students who are missing one or two additional days compared to what they did in the past. While it's not impacting their overall mean, it is indicative that, that we do have students who are not attending at as high a rate as they did in the past. And again, I think underscores the need to, to continue to focus on school climate, because I think this is an indicator of school climate. Your attendance rates tend to be higher, you have kids who attend 94, 95, 96% individually when they, they feel safe and, and comfortable in their school and want to, to be there. Moving to communications, we have two indicators, open, clear, and timely communication and access to information. Since 24, 20, 2014, 2015, the percentage of stakeholders agreeing that communications are open and timely has remained stable. Within this group, parents consistently, parents, which is probably our largest stakeholder group, external stakeholder group, they consistently have positive attitudes towards the system in terms of our ability to provide them information, clear information in a timely fashion, and their, their responses for this have been 80, about 80% positive over this window of time. Perceptions relative to access to information have also remained high, and again, 80, 80-plus percent over this window of time. Finally, moving on to organizational effectiveness, we have five indicators here, workforce diversity, employee engagement, school utilization, finance, financial resource management, and transportation efficiency. Starting with workforce diversity, we've made some progress here. I'm pleased to say that school-based minorities hires are up 8.2% over this window, and non-school-based minority hires are up by 7.8% during this window of time. And with our teaching staff, we've had a 4.4 percentage increase in minority hires during this window of time. So, in terms of school-based and non-school-based staff, these, these both exceed the rate of change in our student population and are beginning to close the gap. Our teaching force changes are keeping up at this point. In terms of employee engagement, one of the indicators we look at for this is absence rates for both school-based and non-school-based staff, and I'm pleased to say that in both cases, the absence rates have decreased to 4.5 and 4.8% respectively. So, in both cases, our, our staff, both school-based and non-school-based, are attending work more regularly. In terms of school utilization enrollment, not surprisingly, our enrollment continues to increase. You guys hear me talk about this fairly frequently. We add about 1,000 students a year, 1,000 to 1,500 a year. The current capital improvement plan, as it's laid out, addresses elementary and middle school overcrowding, and as we implement that, and you see some indication of this particularly in the Southwest, as schools come online, the overcrow, the peak overcrowding begins to diminish. In the 16, 17 school year, both, you know, the Landstown project wasn't in place at that point, so we will, we will expect to see additional relief from that. And with the two projects in the Northeast, with Victory Villa and Honey Go, we would expect that as those come into place, we will see immediate relief for the Northeast as well. So, before I roll into, to the, the next piece here, I would like to also mention that in terms of financial management, the superintendent mentioned earlier, our, our finance team has consistently won from 2005 to 2017, the National Institute of Achievement and of Excellence in Procurement awards. That's a 12-year window where they've done that. They've also won the Government of Financial Officers Award for the Certificate of Excellence for their comprehensive annual financial report. We continue to see improvements in the alignment of the budget, and there's less than 1% variance between the proposed budget and the expenditures within the year, showing that the, the way the budget is outlined and the way it's expended in the year are very, very closely aligned. And transportation remains, our census on transportation in the fall, the, the on-time arrival rates remain at 95% or higher in that census administration. I got excited there and clicked a little ahead, because, you know, really fairly excited to talk about our new dashboards. It is a sort of a groundbreaking thing for us. In December of this past year, I came to the board and I, I presented the team's work to put forth to the community the stakeholder survey results in, in a public dashboard that was interactive. And we committed at the time to have dashboards for the remaining areas of the blueprint available by the fall of this year. I'm really pleased to say my team has just been working incredibly hard, and today, live on our webpage, we have dashboards that support all four pillars of, of the, of the blueprint document. They're all there. Chuck's only been pushing for that for about four years now. He should be really happy. In addition, under the academic dashboard, not only do we produce the data for, and I'll click ahead, so on the webpage, this is what it looks like. It's under, under the public dashboards. And under academics, we do not only have the academic indicators that are in the blueprint, but we also have the map and PARK data available for the system. And that, that's available at the system level and also disaggregated onto the building level as well. So, folks can look by subject, by grade, across either the system or by building in both reading and math. The other indicators, operations, you know, safety and security, both the operations side in terms of what's happening in the buildings, and you see, what I was talking about, things going from half the schools to 100%, 60% of the schools to 100%. You see those things on these screenshots. You also have the student side of that, that dashboard, in terms of communication and organizational effectiveness. Again, you have interactive dashboards for all the dimensions of the data that are in the blueprint document that, that's before you today. So, we're ahead of schedule on that, and I'm pleased to say that we are committed by the fall to have a dashboard present for students count as well, so that folks are going to be able to interact with the students' count document in a way that's maybe a little less cumbersome than the, you know, the 400 and some page document that folks are obligated to work their way through at the point in time. So, with that being said, I'd be...
Are the questions of Dr. Brown?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to, I'd just take a second just to thank Dr. Brown and his team. I clearly remember for my interim interview last year, having that conversation with the board about the possibility of these dashboards. Mr. McDaniel's, I know that you brought it up, Mr. Stewart as well. And so, it's great to see this as a deliverable for the system. And Dr. Brown, I know that you've really pressed on your team, but this is in the spirit of transparency to make these dashboards a reality. So, thank you for all of your hard work and the work of your team as well. This seems like now, you know, it just seems like it's something that's effortless, but we know otherwise, that this takes leadership and vision and tenacity, so thank you so much.
I would...
Please.
I would be remiss if I didn't thank the superintendent, because these types of dashboards and this sort of transparency is rare. It takes a commitment from leadership to make this happen. There is nothing like this in the state of Maryland. Our team presented this at the state conference last week, and people want to learn how we, we do this. They want to copy this. This simply doesn't exist in many places in the country, period. And it takes a commitment from the leadership, from the superintendent, to make this happen, or it just doesn't happen.
Board member questions of Dr. Brown. Mrs. Miller.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. On kindergarten readiness, what are we attributing the decline in kindergarten readiness to? Is it looked at as, you know, based on the skill level of the incoming students, or is it an increase in the requirements for students entering kindergarten?
So, Ms. Miller, the, the way you framed it, I think is very helpful. The measure that's been used during this window of time to kindergarten readiness measure has been constant. So, it's not a change in the measure, it's not a change in the expectation over this window of time. The demonstrated skills for students who are entering has been diminishing.
Okay. Because, you know, we had teachers lining up earlier, seems like many hours ago, with signs, and most of them dealt with the expectations on our youngest, you know, students and kindergarten. So, that's a concern, you know, what we're asking of our kindergarten students.
So, this, just so I'm clear, this is pre-kindergarten. This is kid, this is student, this is children coming into the system, not children in the system.
Correct. It's children, as they enter the system, we assess their skills and their readiness to enter kindergarten.
And that's done in the first couple of weeks of kindergarten?
Correct, by...
So, they're in kindergarten?
Right. But it's measuring, it's, it's measuring their readiness coming into school, it's not measuring the rigor of school.
Yeah, okay. Also, you talk about suspensions, and I think you looked at, was it a five-year window? Is that what it was? Now, I know there's been some recent reporting, I think it was Fox 45 or one of the local stations had reporting on suspensions, and they looked at a 10-year window, and they reported that BCPS went from over 23,000 suspensions in 2007 to under 10,000 in 2017. So, could you talk a little bit about that and how that relates to what you're reporting here?
So, I'm speaking about the last five years and what's happened within the last five years. And within the last five years, the 2016, 2017 suspension rate was the highest suspension rate, both in percentage and also sheer number of students suspended. I want to say it was over 8,000 students were suspended in 2016, 2017 school year, and that, again, the duration of those suspensions was actually longer. That the, so, again, the data during this window of time would suggest that, that we haven't been suppressing suspensions, they've actually been on the rise, and the amount of time that kids have been out of school has also been on the rise during that, that window of time, which is recent, and again, probably within the control of the folks in the room.
So, at the same time, though, we had attendant, or we had enrollment going up. So, how does that impact those numbers? Could that play in?
When I, when I said that the proportion of suspensions went up, the percentage of suspensions has gone up over that window of time, the proportion is a lovely measure that is not sensitive to the size of the population. So, if 5.5% of 100,000 students are suspended, or 5.5% of 200,000 students are suspended, it's a fair measure irrespective of the size of the population, though the sheer number of students would be double in, in a sample twice as large.
And what do you feel is the relationship between behavior issues and discipline? Do you see it as there's an adverse relationship, or is it a correlation? So, for instance, as suspensions are going up, we would hope that behavioral issues are declining. We, we hope that there's an adverse relationship, that, that the consequences are having an impact, you know, and, and helping to...
I think that that, that is the issue. That is the issue, that many times we see that suspensions are not changing the students' behavior, even though we've had more suspensions. So, it's about those restorative practices, it's about the wraparound services, it's about teaching what appropriate behavior looks like and what it, what it should be in schools. Because when we just go back with the traditional, I'll suspend you and then you're out and then you learn from that, sometimes children do, sometimes they don't. And so, there are times when we have to remove the child from that school environment because he's, he or she is posing a safety, a safety risk to himself or others, and so that there is no choice. But what we're finding is that the suspension alone, without any restorative practice, doesn't necessarily change the behavior.
But yet, they're out of the system, or at least temporarily, so they're not present to be doing behavioral issues. So, regardless of whether it's changing their minds, it is changing their location. So, it's going to have an impact on, you know, behavioral referrals and behavioral incidences in one way or another. But I hear what you're saying. The other possibility is that it could just be that behavior issue, behavioral issues are outpacing the increase in suspension. So, either way, I mean, we're hearing a whole lot of input, stories nationally even, about behavior issues going wild. So, it's hard for me to believe that any of this is proving to us that we've got getting a handle on it, or that it's actually getting better. So, if, if, if rates are going up, what does that mean? How do, what do, what do you say that that indicates? If suspension rates are going up, what does it mean?
I, I would, again, say that contrary to the narrative that, that we're not holding students accountable, the fact that suspension rates have gone up would indicate that more students are being held accountable than two years ago, or even within the last five years. And the fact that the duration of those suspensions has also increased, again, would be indicative that, that, you know, again, contrary to the narrative that students are not being held accountable, that, that students are actually being held accountable with a more stringent bar. Additional interpretations of that, I think, would require more data.
Yeah. And speaking of more data, I'd just like to remind the board that looking at those referrals and behavior issues is something that I've requested multiple times, and we really should think about looking at that. On attendance, you said we're at 94%, and I know there's also been recent news, and this was looking at Maryland schools across the state, but that attendance has been a real problem.[1800.13] across the state, but that attendance has been a real problem in Maryland. And they said that some schools even had up to a 75% absenteeism. I don't think, and I, well, I hope that that's not many of our schools. I tend to, to think that that's probably in other districts more than here. But does that conflict at all with what you're saying here at 94%?
Again, our elementary and middle schools have attendance in aggregate, have attendance rates that are 94% or higher. Our high schools have attendance rates that fluctuate around 90% and have consistently done so over this window of time. Now, again, with any measure, there's variability between schools.
Thank you.
Any further questions? We'll go on this side and then we'll come back. Mr. McDaniels, and then Mrs. Hen.
Thank you. I too want to compliment Dr. Brown and the staff on the report that we received and...
It's all them.
And, you know, the dashboards are exciting. I can't wait to understand them better. I did want to reflect on one of the academic charts that has to do with math and just my perception of what a globally competitive graduate of BCPS means. And I'm totally in support of our focus on literacy. I think that's very appropriate, and I'm 100% behind it. But I just don't want us to lose math and anywhere along the lines. It's not only just BCPS, but our country is falling behind in our global competitiveness in terms of scientists and engineers. And we don't want to lose that, that desire. And it's not only students that are pursuing a professional career. We have some, had some interaction with the trades and apprenticeship programs in Maryland, where we were hearing that students that are pursuing a career right out of high school are having difficulty with the math portion of the requirements to have an apprenticeship and plumbing programs and HVAC programs. So it's affecting our students in a lot of ways. And, and I also say, the more I look into it, not to get on too much of a soapbox, it's not just a BCPS problem. It's a cultural problem, a societal problem. A lot of the portions of our student demographics that are growing are not parts that typically pursue careers and, and, and studies in math and science. So we're fighting uphill battle there. But I think it's a real opportunity for us. It's not, I don't want to even say it's a problem. But I look at the math chart and I really see that it's something that we have to keep our eye on and our focus. And I'm gonna click on some dashboards and just try to make sure that we, you take advantage of that opportunity. Because in the last four or five years, we really haven't moved a needle, as Dr. Brown said, in the math area. And it really presents an opportunity, and I don't want us to miss it.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniels. I think that it's important for the board and for the public to know that this is an area of focus for us. And the report that we're providing you tonight, we just, we want to be honest and transparent and share with you kind of the good, the bad, and the ugly. And so, and to be very honest and open with our report and with our data. Having said that, I also would like the public to understand how all of these pieces kind of work together as well. You heard Mr. Aaron Briale talk earlier about our IB program and about how we're starting with the primary years program and the middle years program and infusing that rigor. In other words, context matters when it comes to inquiry-based learning, project-based learning. So when we speak about literacy and literacy across the disciplines, we do believe that when we're talking about literacy in mathematics, for instance, where kids have a context, a project to work on, a CTE course to work in, a lot of times that will have, we believe, based on the work and what we know about literacy as well, will have an impact on students' mathematical abilities as well. Many of the, the contract that you approved tonight for math interventions, those are the basics of math that we will have to use to catch kids up with the very basics, just solving the basic algorithms. So we have these plans in place, both inquiry-based learning, project-based learning, and the basics of mathematics, to try to catch kids up. Because they will need absolutely Algebra I, which is the gateway to many of the programs and courses that they'll need to pursue for college and career readiness.
Mrs. Hen, and then Mrs. Cozy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I cannot say enough about these dashboards. They are absolutely incredible. If you haven't had a chance to check them out, please do so. A few things get me excited at 10 o'clock at night, and these dashboards are one. Believe me, they are gorgeous, they are functional, they are useful. I've used them before you've expanded them, just in recent weeks, to help stakeholders answer questions. They were terrific.
Thank you.
So kudos to everyone involved in the process. They are moving us in the direction of transparency that I've wanted us, to see us move in since I started on the board and long before. So congratulations, and please, please, please expand them and continue to add to them. It's kind of like you give a mouse a cookie, but we want more. So great job, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll convey that to the team.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cozy.
Yes, just to dovetail with Mr. McDaniels on the, on the math. Because we see the trend going down in, in all areas. Populate, you know, there's an average for all students, but then we also see within the populations, they're, they're, they're all going down. And I guess one of my additional concerns around this is that with the grading and reporting procedures that have changed, where we have a low score of, in some content areas where any, excuse me. Thank you. So first of all, I did want to dovetail and say thank you for this report. And I haven't looked at the dashboards, but, you know, believe me, I'll call you back. Not tonight. But in any case, I wanted to dovetail with Mr. McDaniels about the eighth grade completing Algebra I with a grade of B or higher. So there's a concern because it's affecting all of our students, the overall average for all students, but also in every population group. And it's interesting because in the kindergarten readiness assessments, although those are declining, there are some populations that may start out lower, but then they achieve a great deal and then surpass other populations. So I think there needs to be some examination of what is it that is allowing the growth in some populations? And then the other issue is, that's concerning to me with the decrease in the number of students earning a grade of B or higher, is that we have a grading and reporting procedures in place now where the students have the opportunity to redo, they have the opportunity to turn and work later than previous, previously, and also where there, there's the low score, which is sometimes where students will get a 50 rather than a lower score, even if there was in fact a zero, which I really do not find helpful for the student or for the teachers from what I've seen and what I've, information that I've been given. So it's concerning that the grades where they might, one might consider that they would be higher with all of these extra opportunities for the students' grades to be increased, and yet they're not. So I'd like to, with, along with Mr. McDaniels, to really have staff look into what is it that is causing this decline? The other issue that I wanted to talk about is going back to the suspension rate. I think it is important to look over a longer timeframe, because one of the things that we've heard tonight, and we've heard it from other places, from our stakeholders, is that there are state regulations and also federal guidelines that may be impacting this. And for board members to know that, where are those data points? Where are those changes over time? And what has affected, what we have to respond to in terms of regulation above us? And how much policy and procedure is at our level? And what, what can we do to improve behavior? Because the suspension rate tells one thing. But what we don't have, what's not reported in here, but I'm sure it's somewhere, is what is the trend on the incidents, the referrals, that are being reported? Because if we have an incredible increase of incidents that are reported rate, but the suspension rate is not going on, then there's a disparity between how we're planning or how we're reacting to behavior incidents. If our incidence level is much, much lower and we're suspending higher, then one could say, well, then we're being more serious about our discipline. But we don't have that. And as Ms. Miller has mentioned, it's been asked for and not received. So we need to get that information, and I would hope that that can be forthcoming, Ms. White. The other issue that I would like to see, and we've heard it tonight from so many people, is what is the trend on bullying that is reported? What are those bullying-specific incidents? Because not only do we need to understand, again, the bullying incidents versus the discipline or the restorative justice that's happening, where is the improvement? What is going to help our students to behave better? Because the, the issue with bullying is twofold, at least, and with chronic bullying. So do we have victims that are chronic victims because of incidents they're reporting that involve more incidents, but also maybe more bullies that are impacting them? And also, we need to check for the students that are doing these behaviors, that are the bullies. Where are our chronic bullies? Because they need support. They need identification. They need help in order to understand what's happening with them, so that they can be supported and also achieve academically. And the other thing I would like to understand is what is the access that our students have in our system to alternative education? I've just heard anecdotally that we are having less capacity at our alternative schools, and I would like to understand more about that. Because we have the students we have, we need to do the best by each of them, but we also have to maintain orderly classrooms for the teachers and for the, the students that are in there. So I would like to see more information on that. Is that possible, or is that gonna be something on the dashboard?
There is actually, the board has already approved a contract for an evaluation of our alternative programs. So that will be, Dr. Wistad, I'm not quite sure when we're launching that evaluation, but we are actually, you know, again, these things that are being stated, Ms. Cozy, your points are ones that our school staff take very seriously. And if you'll recall, climate is the number one indicator that administrators have to consider when they're doing their school progress plans. And some time ago, it used to be academics, and we still consider the academics paramount, but climate is the very first consideration. Our school administrators look at office referrals, they look at trend analysis, they look at where those points of behavior are happening. They look at antecedent behaviors. They look at where the problem areas might be. They, you know, so all of those things are operationally done, school by school. The data is analyzed by the administrative teams, and then they plan accordingly. Because we cannot, as a system, have a blanket approach for all of our schools to say, "Do this," based on where the incidents are occurring, how many incidents are occurring, and the nuances, because we have 113,000 students and we have to handle them each individually, and as well as our 173 school centers and programs. With regard to the alternative programs, when are we starting that study?
Sure. Well, it's very timely because they are here today. We met with them, and we'll be meeting with them again tomorrow. So we had two meetings with them today in different stakeholder groups to kind of flesh out exactly what the timelines will be over the next five years and the activities that they'll be participating in. So the first year will be a lot of their review of our current data and documents, as well as site visits and focus groups. Then hopefully in the spring, the plan is to have a draft report so that we can have a final report after one full year of their review, which, you know, if they begin in July and August of this year, hopefully by the summer, we'll have that final report for year one, and so on through every year, we'll get a yearly report from them.
Are there more questions, Dr. Brown?
Yes. So tying in with the suspension rate, the incident rates, the bullying trends, I'm looking at my policy review committee meeting documents for our upcoming meeting, which is next week, and I do not see the discipline policies on. They were brought forward over a year ago by former administration, and the changes that he wanted to make were not accepted by the policy review, and we were changing those. And then we halted the process in order to get more public input. But it's been over a year, so, and what we're hearing from our stakeholders is that we have a crisis, that we have a lot that's going on. And I'm curious, when is this board going to evaluate the discipline policies and have this type of information available so that we can understand and do the best thing in terms of where do we need to strengthen them, or where do we need to change them? And get the input from our teachers to understand how that policy and those procedures are impacting them?
As I said in my opening remarks and for my superintendent's report, we have two groups that are working on behavior and discipline. So I know that there has been talk about a task force, but our, our groups are very targeted based on the work that we're doing. I know Dr. Merkomis has done some work with, alongside Abby Baton, in her group with teachers. So when you're talking about teachers' voice, teachers' voices are heard. We are actually working very closely with that group to examine the discipline policies and to be, I'm not quite sure when the readiness will be, but we want to make sure that we get it right, to bring those policies forward to the policy committee. I don't believe a date has been set yet. The group is still engaged in their work. The second group is that, the other committee, the handbook committee, that examines all of the categories, all of the logical, the rules, the logical consequences that have to do with the suspensions, the consequences for problematic behavior, and looking at the trend data and analysis and how to handle that as well. So there are actually two key groups that are uniquely involved in policies, practices, and how that might play out for the board. Keep in mind as well that this year is the first year, as I said in my report, of the Office of School Climate that I created when we started, this past July 1st. That office is uniquely interested in the trend analysis, data analysis, and looking at working specifically with school teams on how to address those problematic behaviors, particularly in their school progress plans. So I would say that, yes, the suspension numbers are going up, but we have an increased effort this year to really dig underneath that data, and we have practical steps. We put in practical steps to target those key behaviors and those problematic behaviors as well.
Well, I would just say that it's been over a year that we've been hearing about the task force, and certainly TABCO needs to take a key role. But it sounds from our stakeholders and from teachers going on video anonymously that we really need to move forward with this. And I'm looking forward to Julie Hen and the, the motion that she's making in order to try and move this forward at, at a greater rate, because it has been over a year. And we clearly need to wrap our arms around this and get more input from teachers who's, who, many of whom are not aware of this task force. So I'm curious how we're getting input from them in a comprehensive and anonymous way, because we do hear about concerns of retribution or, or being reported. So I know we're gonna discuss that more at a future meeting. So given the lateness of the hour, I'll move on to the next issue. Mr. Brown, on the dashboards, when we talk about our graduation rate, I'm curious, can you explain about waivers that we are still receiving from the MSDE related to the park tests?
Sure. Tell me a little bit more about what you mean.
Well, because of the park testing, MSDE had given statewide waivers for park test requirements for graduation. So previously, when we had the HSAs, there were high school grad...
Oh, so you're speaking about the cohort variances in terms of the testing requirements for graduation?
Yes.
And that's not really a waiver, it's just the way they phased in the, the testing That is a rather complex issue, and one that it would not be easily articulated at this point in time. We actually build it into the logic of our dashboards for our schools, so that they understand the testing requirements, because they vary by cohort and the year in which you, you know, what grade you're in, et cetera. So it's really a fairly complex model. It is not that clear.
If, and for those who served on the curriculum committee, I believe it was last year, we brought forward that chart. The reason why Dr. Brown is saying that it is a complex issue, it depends on the cohort, it depends on the, the date and time...
And it changes.
And the entry points, and it changes based on cohort. So there's this spreadsheet, and those who are, who have served on curriculum committee may have remembered.
Be happy to...
That has been brought forward to the board.
Be happy to get that, but I'm not gonna pretend I can articulate all of that at this moment.
So it's fair to say that some of our students are gradu... So it's fair to say that some of our students are graduating, but they do not have to meet the requirements that in the past our high school graduates had to meet in terms of passing the HSA. So right now, they're taking the park, but some students are not passing the park, but they're graduating.
The requirements for graduation have changed over time.
Yes.
Not just the tests, but also the credit requirements have changed over time, and that's always a moving target.
So the question is, relative to our graduation rate, how many graduates are crossing the stage having met all the requirements, and how many are graduating with having the phased-in noncompliance with the park test score? And how many, just regularly, there's other pathways that we use? Is that information available on the dashboard?
The students who cross the stage have met the testing and credit requirements and service learning hours necessary for graduation.
Oh, I know. Oh, I know. But there's other pathways.
The bridge plan is one.
Right. The bridge plan is one. So is there a distinction in the dashboard on?
No.
There's not? Okay. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Urch.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. Dr. Brown, thank you for the dashboard work and for the work of your team, or any of the team still here?
I don't believe so.
Bless their hearts. They're getting some rest. They've done a magnificent job in reviewing the dashboard with regard to suspensions, and it is just one point of data for us to examine, and what's obviously very, very involved. We heard the superintendent use the word nuanced, and for each of our schools and each of our students, there are a lot of different nuances. And to the extent that that exists, I think we should really be complimentary of our county's legislative delegation, because the county legislative delegation did create a task force, and it's the Baltimore County Anti-Bullying Task Force. And the task force itself, while it says Baltimore County, it's actually, when one examines the membership on the task force that's being created, it actually is focused on our Baltimore County schools. And while it says bullying, and also looks to study harassment and to study intimidation in our schools, and the membership is really quite extensive, and the act itself was signed into law last month, and it will actually take effect on July 1st. The legislators created the single largest group of participants on the task force to be themselves in the original draft of the bill. It was four, but after additional consideration, and I think wise counsel amongst themselves, they significantly curtailed their involvement, and they boosted involvement, boosted involvement of a number of stakeholders, increased the number of students that will be on the task force, increased, and actually created, two positions for SROs to participate, a principal at the high school, at the middle school, at the elementary school level. Very importantly, someone who's in the trenches in the elementary school, the middle school and the high school, would be a counselor from each of those three different type of schools. TABCO is represented, and I see my friend Emory Young here. The PTA council is represented as well. It's an extremely robust effort, and the General Assembly, to my way of thinking, having spent some time on a committee in Annapolis as a staffer, did not see some kind of in-and-out quick, "Look, this is a two-and-a-half-year effort, requiring a preliminary report next year, and requiring a final report the following year at the end of the year, or if done sooner." But the areas to be examined extend to existing discipline actions, possible additional discipline actions that could be taken, but to also make recommendations, recommendations about these discipline actions. You know, if kids not being in school is no longer a consequence that alters behavior, the task force will be looking at whether community service might be an option that could be looked at as well. Electronic learning as another option. And also, it changes, in part, the perspective of how one looks at this to a more victim-oriented approach, because what options are available for those who have been the targets of bullying? And there are many of us in this room, myself included, in a middle school environment who was bullied. And where do you go? And we say to our students, there should be a staffer that you can go to and talk with, that you feel comfortable to speak to. But that shouldn't be the only resource that's available, and that specifically is one of the mentions made in the task force bill, that there be additional, that there be a look at additional resources that are available for students who find themselves in that position. And then also, on the disruptive side, the actions of students whose presence is disruptive, what options are there beyond what may currently exist? And then these recommendations would come forward, whether they're in alignment with the list provided by, or suggested by the General Assembly, or from the process of the task force's own work. Then that can inform decision-making on system policies. So there already is a task force, and it covers quite a lot of ground, and it takes effect July 1st. So the appointments to this should be coming very shortly, and we can get this up and running so that we can have that dialogue, or as my good friend Nick Stewart would say, we can have that important thoughtful consideration about the future of our students. Thank you, Dr. Brown.
All right, Dr. Brown, we thank you very much for your presentation on Blueprint 2.0. One last wave. Next on our agenda is Item Q, Report of the Board of Education Policies. Mr. Urch.
Thank you very much, Chair Gillis. Members of our board, our Board of Education's Policy Review Committee asks that our board accept this report of your committee's approved proposed amendments to the following board policies. Policy 6304, Commemorations and Observances. Policy 6707, Patriotic Exercises. Policy 6500, Research and Assessment. Policy 6800, Field Trips and Foreign Travel Study Programs. These recommendations of your policy review committee are presented to our board on tonight's agenda as Exhibit Q.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the recommendations of the board's policy review committee?
So moved.
All right, all in favor, please say aye. Raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Urch. Next on our agenda, Item R, Board Member Comments. Mr. Young.
So graduation was a very unique emotional experience, seeing the excitement of students and parents. It was truly enjoyable. At the end of the superintendent's report, at the end of the video, the young lady speaking was the valedictorian from Randalls Town High School. Her speech was truly inspiring, and one of the other pearls of wisdom, I would say, that she mentioned was telling her fellow classmates to not use other people's success and failure for themselves to measure their own. So congratulations once again to the class of 2018, and to the class of 2019, you're up next.
Mrs. Eaton.
I would like to thank Ms. Shea for explanations of the language arts intervention materials. It really helped me to understand the contracts better and know which way to vote. Thank you. I would like to thank Josie for her energy on the board, her great smile and her giggles, and good luck in college. At the next meeting, I would like an answer to, what can the school system do to help teachers feel more comfortable speaking out about their concerns without feeling that their jobs are in jeopardy? Who can they turn to for assistance? Thank you.
Mr. Urch.
Thank you, Ed. As y'all heard Ed mention, we were able to go to the Volunteer of the Year event. It was a tremendous event, and I wanted to just recognize that there was a principal from one of our middle schools in our sixth district, Principal Erin O'Toole-Trevis, who has recently been recognized in her own right as a Region Two Principal of the Year, and she's also completing her doctorate at Notre Dame. And with her was a Volunteer of the Year nominee from our Parkville Middle School, and that was Rebecca Ramsey. And unfortunately, Rebecca was left off of the program inadvertently, I'm sure, but I wanted to make sure at this moment, we did recognize her fine, fine, fine work. I would also want to make note, as my colleague said about the graduations, what fun the graduations were. And this year, my schedule allowed me to attend a unique completion ceremony at our Battle Monument School, and if any of our board members have the opportunity to attend such a ceremony, you should avail yourself of it, just my opinion. And the art teacher at the school, Ms. Flynn, was able to show me the artwork of our students at Battle Monument and discuss in detail those which were two-dimensional and those which were three-dimensional, using computer and radio and television parts. And then I was able to attend, of all things, the 32nd Annual High School Art Exhibit over at the Rosenberg Gallery at our Goucher. And lo and behold, Battle Monument students' artwork is on display there as well, and Maiden Choice artwork is displayed there, as is our Ridge Ruxton School students, as well as other students from our sixth district. And during the graduations, if I'm still able to remember their names and the artwork that they created, when the student comes across the stage and I shake their hand, I can say to them, "I saw your art over at Goucher," and give them the name, and they'll stop and like, look at you, that, you know, these artists that we have that are having the special moment to then be also recognized for their artistic endeavors. And I would just end on this note, that I was also able to go to really just a wonderful event over at our Carver to see the all-county dance ensembles perform. And if you want to see gracefulness and poise, confidence and athleticism, all in a single place, that was the place to be in Baltimore County that evening. Josie, we will miss you, but we wish you the best of luck, and we always have you to remind us. Thank you so much.
Mr. McDaniel.
Thank you. I would just like to say what a joy it's been to sit next to Ms. Schaefer for a year. Without exception, every time she's greeted me, it's been with a smile and a pleasant presence, and I just think it's something that we as adults could pick up on from her time here on the board. And I also would say that we've taken pride as BCPS to be one of the first school systems in the state to develop an equity policy, and I believe that some of the information that we were presented with tonight is really the lifeline. It brings that equity policy alive, and we have some things to be happy with, but we still have some challenges. And that is just understanding that students need different things, and even Ms. Miller-Breitz talked tonight about how our gifted students need something different from everybody else. And I think that's at what the heart of our equity policy, recognizing that we have a very diverse student population, and some people need different things, and we need to move the needle on some of the things. We've moved it well in some areas, and we have some challenges, but hopefully we'll work together to make sure all our students are raising up to their potential. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Schaefer? The SMOB's final words have already been spoken. Ms. Cozy.
Thank you. I just want to say this year has gone fast for me as a board member, but also as a parent. It seems just a few weeks ago that I was double-checking the supply list with my son and filling the backpack and, you know, headed off, wondering what the new schedule, the new teachers and the new friends in the classes would bring. And I'm, you know, very thankful that it was a wonderful year and just really, we have truly dedicated teachers and administrators and our staff that work behind the scenes that every day are focused on our children doing better. And I was, and then just recently, we were packing up the laptop to return it back to school. I was also honored to attend and officiate at five graduations, and there is no more important mission than educating, nurturing, and preparing our young people so they can fulfill their potential and lead our neighborhoods, county and country, to a safer, more equitable, and prosperous future. And we can say, "Mission accomplished," because there were so many wonderful students that walked across the stages. It's truly inspirational. It was also a privilege and a joy to participate in the celebration of those amazing students, and also a chance to acknowledge the incredible contribution of our teachers, staff, administrators, parents, and others that have educated, nurtured, and supported our students in their journey to that life-changing accomplishment. We'll miss our own graduate Josie, but we wish her well on her way to College Park, and she's going to do great, so go Terps. Among other school visits, PTA meetings and community meetings, I was able to attend the School Day Task Force that's led by Mr. Burke, and I appreciate Mr. Roberts being there, holding the first public input meeting at Lockraven High School last week. I'm encouraged that there's finally going to be an evaluation of the impact of the changes that were made to the high school schedules four years ago, including the benefits that were lost with the removal of the semester block schedule that was used by four or more high schools, including Hereford High School that's in my third district, and the seven-period day schedule that was removed from eight or more high schools at that time, including Delaney and Lockraven High School that are in my district. I appreciate the Blueprint 2.0 report, and I appreciate the dashboard. I look forward to looking into that. But I do feel that there is better information that we can receive that can help us to understand the trends in some areas and what are the factors in those trends, because we do need to understand that in order to do the work of the board, which is to evaluate the policies and the programs, and to see where we need to make changes, and also in terms of where we need to align the budget, as we heard earlier in that very good discussion about the curriculum materials, it's very important for us to understand that we're allocating that budget equitably across the needs of our various students. With what we've heard around school discipline, climate, and bullying, we really need to address this very vigorously and immediately in terms of letting folks know what we're doing more clearly with the task force that Ms. White talked about, what the timelines are, and really, where can there be more community input? Because clearly, there are many, many people that do not feel that there is enough work being done in this area. And this is not just relative to Baltimore County public schools. There's obviously trends that are happening statewide and nationwide. It's not that our students are different than other students, but we need to, here with our responsibilities, make sure that we're doing the best that we can for each of our students. I'm also glad that at the last meeting, we approved the audit contract, and it'll be, it's encouraging that they are finally going to start to see the impact of some of the issues that we've faced in the past years. It'll be interesting to see what they can find, so I'm looking forward to that. And I just really have appreciated being on the board and being able to serve the community, and I appreciate all of the staff and the superintendent and all the work that they do for our students. It's truly a wonderful system. Thank you.
Mrs. Hen.
Thank you. To the class of 2018, including and especially our dear Josie, you make us so very proud. We know that every day presents challenges and choices. Your academic success reflects a series of choices and sacrifices that you've made to prioritize your education. Perhaps you've spent beautiful days like today inside studying for exams. Maybe you pushed yourself by taking multiple AP courses. Almost certainly, you've invested considerable time and effort into your studies and activities and have given your best. For that, I thank you, because we need your best. We need the energy, enthusiasm, talents, and skills you have to offer. We need your efforts and your dedication to excellence, and we need your commitment to continue to grow and to learn and to serve. You've demonstrated you have what it takes. I hope you'll look back on this accomplishment with pride and know that you have a community who believes in you and who believes in your potential to contribute. We are counting on you, and we are behind you. I congratulate you on your academic success, and I extend my warmest, best wishes for continued accomplishment and happiness in all you do.
Mrs. Miller.
Thank you. And thank you to all the advocates who spoke tonight on discipline and school violence. Our school system operates under misdirected federal guidance, state laws and regulations, and board policies, which are causing a crisis of school violence. which are causing a crisis of school violence, not only here in BCPS, but across Maryland and nationally. That guidance was adopted by MSDE for grant money or to settle investigations by the Office of Civil Rights. We, as a board, are a directive and oversight entity. Our board could lead the way in Maryland by saying no to federal guidance and state regulations that detriment our students and staff. For instance, for even the most egregious offenses, our policies are written in such a way that administering zero consequences for these offenses is still in compliance. The board has the authority and moral obligation to change that. This board could also pass a resolution to ask the state board to reconsider and revise discipline regulations in 2014 to comply with the federal guidance that has required these loose board policies in all counties across the state. The board could finally require data on behavioral incidences instead of inadequate discipline data the system chooses to provide. Simply denying the realities will never resolve this issue. This is a can that cannot be kicked down the road. A generation of students have one shot at an education and are at risk of being lost to school violence. And finally, I say farewell, congratulations, and good luck to our student member, Josie. Do well in college and all of your future endeavors.
All right, Mr. Hayden. The only barrier between now and adjournment is you.
Mr. Gillis, I will endeavor to keep it under an hour. The... When you get around graduation time, it's always a special time, and you look at it from a number of viewpoints. I was very fortunate this year that my youngest daughter graduated from Loyola University with some sort of funny thing behind her name, Sumacum Laud, whatever that means. And we're very proud of her. But when you look at your children, that's really what it's all about, because the kids are the bottom line, and that's why we serve on these boards. And so for all the accolades that have been thrown over to that corner, today, I'm not going to throw one over there. I'm going to turn this way and say, "Mom and Dad, you done good. You did a good job raising a daughter here", and it makes a big difference in how well the education goes. So that's important for us to get across when we're working hard to get children to do their best. We need help from Mom and Dad. We need help from home. And so the help that you gave is very, very obvious, and we thank you for that. And you gave us certainly a great product, one that we can brag about and will, I'm sure, in the future. So the best to you all in the future. And do you have another daughter that's coming our way, or... But we'd like to, again, thank you and congratulate all of our young people who graduated this year. That's all, Mr. Gillis.
Thank you. There's information and announcements in your materials. We're adjourned.